Good evening. Good evening. If everyone will make sure that your cellphone is cut completely off, that would be great. There's a $20 fine if it rings. So, and the other thing they ask you to do, we've got a full house. Please do not talk to your neighbor when there's a presentation being made. That'll be respectful of the speaker that we have. We're honored to have with us to do our invocation, Joe McDaniel. Joe is the founder and CEO of Operation Resolute. Joe?
Y'all pray with me, Lord, we're grateful for this day.
Hold on just a minute. Okay, we're getting ready to have our prayer, so let's pay attention to Joe.
Father, we're grateful for this day, we're grateful for the beauty of it. Thank you that it reminds us that all good gifts come from you. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to gather and exercise just freedom in government. Pray for discernment. You tell us in Proverbs not to lean on our own understanding, but in all of our ways that we acknowledge you in doing so, you'll make the path straight. So we ask for that straight path tonight, Lord. We pray that as the discussions go, that there will be much respect, there'll be much discernment, there'll be much wisdom, and in doing so, right choices will be made. So we ask all of these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Joe. At this time, I'll call our monthly meeting to order. I'll ask that you stand, and we'll have the pledge, and it'll be led by Commissioner Randy Walker. Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask if any of our commissioners have a conflict of interest with any item on the agenda tonight. Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We're down to items for presentation. The first one is our service award, Dolores.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We don't have any Beaufort County employees here tonight to pick up their service awards, but there are some folks I'd like to acknowledge. First of all, for five years of service, we have Letitia Bozeman. And I think that's going to be a name update from your agenda. And Letitia's with the Department of Social Services. Then we have Ms. Lauren Hall with the Department of Social Services, who also has five years of service. We have Ashley Edwards with the Health Department, who has 15 years of service. And Gregory Rowe with our Sheriff's Office with 15 years of service. So I'd like to congratulate them.
Please express our thanks to them. The next item is the Agape presentation on the Aurora Medical Clinic Project. Brian, you're going to kick that off.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you'll recall, we kind of previewed this at the last meeting that the Agape folks would be here to have a presentation on the Aurora Medical Clinic Project. Dr. McDuffie and his staff are here. I think he's got his engineer and his architect as well, with a presentation, then answer any questions the board may have on moving the project forward.
Esteemed Beaufort County Commissioners...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman and Commissioners. Of course, everyone knows me, I'm Dr. McDuffie, CEO of Agape Health Services, for those that don't know. And we're here to share a few, our presentation on establishing the Aurora Health Center. I think we have a video.
Thank you for this opportunity to present a transformative healthcare initiative for Aurora and its surrounding communities. Today, we're not just proposing a building. We're presenting a vision for a healthier, more prosperous future. Building upon our successful mobile clinic, we aim to establish a permanent foundation that will revolutionize healthcare access and quality in our region. Since 1998, Agape Health Services has been a cornerstone of community healthcare in eastern North Carolina. Our mission is to provide high-quality, comprehensive care to all residents, regardless of their ability to pay. We currently operate four sites and provide weekly services in Aurora with our mobile health unit. Our success in Aurora demonstrates the critical need for accessible healthcare in this rural area. We propose establishing a permanent Aurora Health Center. This facility will bridge the healthcare gap in our region, ensuring residents have immediate, consistent access to essential services. From primary care and mental health services to substance use treatment and pharmacy management, we're committed to providing integrated, comprehensive care. A key feature of our proposal is the inclusion of a low-cost 340B pharmacy, which will be the only such facility within a 30-mile radius. This pharmacy will offer significant benefits to uninsured and Medicare populations, providing essential medications at affordable prices. Future plans include dental services and specialized care, ensuring a holistic approach to health and well-being. The impact of this center will be transformative. It aligns with Aurora's strategic goals, supporting community partnerships and expanding healthcare access. Our integrated care model ensures seamless coordination, leading to better health outcomes and a healthier community. We anticipate a reduction in emergency room visits and hospitalizations for manageable conditions, enhanced preventive care, and substantial healthcare cost savings for the Aurora community. The Aurora Health Center will be a powerful economic catalyst for our community. It will create a minimum of 20 new healthcare jobs, attracting professionals eager to benefit from federal loan repayment programs available in health provider shortage areas. The additional health professionals and staff will not only boost local employment, but also stimulate growth in housing, retail, and other sectors. Moreover, by focusing on preventive care and effective management of chronic conditions, we project substantial savings in overall healthcare costs, directly contributing to Aurora's long-term economic prosperity. To bring this vision to life, we're proposing a comprehensive renovation that goes beyond mere cosmetic changes. Our proposal offers a transformative upgrade to the facility, ensuring we can meet both immediate and future healthcare needs of Aurora. This includes modernizing exam rooms, creating dedicated spaces for mental health and substance use treatment, and implementing advanced systems for improved air quality and infection control. While the investment is significant, it offers substantial long-term value and return on investment. Agape will be leveraging various resources and partnerships to make this vision a reality, demonstrating our unwavering commitment to Aurora's health and prosperity. The renovation proposal includes modernizing exam rooms, creating dedicated spaces for mental health and substance use treatment, and implementing advanced systems for improved air quality and infection control. The total project cost has been updated to $810,416, which includes $762,526 for the renovation, $7,890 for critical asbestos abatement, and an additional $40,000 allowance for air quality mitigation due to detected long-term ceiling mold spore growth. This investment ensures we're not just meeting current needs, but preparing for future healthcare demands. Agape is also applying for the NC Department of Commerce building reuse funding for rural healthcare, potentially reducing the renovation budget by $200,000. In the long run, this will likely result in lower maintenance costs, improved energy efficiency, and the ability to adapt to changing healthcare needs without frequent costly upgrades. The enhanced facility will attract more healthcare professionals and patients, potentially increasing revenue and improving overall health outcomes. Additionally, Agape Health Services is demonstrating its commitment by assuming all development costs totaling $365,782. This investment breaks down as follows. $18,000 for engineering services, $65,000 for architectural services, $102,782 for essential medical equipment, $65,000 for x-ray equipment, $35,000 for signage, and $80,000 for a power generator. The power generator enhances the facility's resilience, allowing it to serve as an emergency shelter and maintain operations during natural disasters. This significant contribution underscores our dedication to the project's success and the community's well-being.
If people can't come to you for services, you go to them.
Hopefully, others will follow, such as grocery stores, you know, basic things, gas stations, and other services in this community.
She says treatment requires trust.
We are just getting started. And the problem is, with a lot of these communities, they've been abandoned. And what we're trying to do is build trust, and that does take some time.
The mobile clinic is working with other community groups like H3C and Right for Revival to bridge that resource gap.
We need a little bit from everybody, and they need us too. So it's that collaboration that will further strengthen the bonds within our communities.
This trust building is crucial, as illustrated by James, a longtime resident of the area.
I was out of medicine for about like three months, high blood pressure pills and stuff. And the latest I could get, when I went three places, I had to wait till September, the earliest that anybody could get to me. And I can't do without that medicine.
Like their brick-and-mortar facilities, the mobile unit is complete access, meaning you don't need insurance to receive care. Right now, Agape is figuring out how to bring prescriptions to their residents unable to travel, as well as provide pediatric services and mental and behavioral health.
That would be very nice. The people would be close to get their medicine and everything. And it'd be help. Anything that's helped, let's go for it.
As we conclude, we want to emphasize our unwavering commitment to the Aurora community and the transformative potential of the new Aurora Health Center. This project represents a pivotal step forward in providing comprehensive, high-quality healthcare to our residents. We're calling on your support, Beaufort County Commissioners, for this vital initiative. The $770,416 investment will fund a state-of-the-art healthcare facility that will serve as a cornerstone for community health and economic growth. Agape Health Services has demonstrated its dedication by committing over $365,000 to this project. Together, we have the power to create a healthier, more prosperous future for Aurora. We strongly urge you to approve this funding request and join us in bringing this vision to life. The next steps involve securing this crucial funding to transform our vision into reality. We are actively engaging with stakeholders, community leaders, and potential partners to ensure the success of this initiative. Thank you for your attention and thoughtful consideration of this transformative project. We welcome any questions you may have about the Aurora Health Center, our plans, or how you can get involved. Our team stands ready to provide additional information and discuss how we can collaborate to build a brighter, healthier future for Aurora.
Esteemed... Okay, so with that, I did, I don't know if we're able to... So basically, your presentation also includes some additional items in there, which includes, which also includes the report for the asbestos abatement, and then the allowance for the air quality. As we stated in the presentation, that we did find some, there was some mold spore in the air quality, and so we have to make sure that that is mitigated. Speaking with a contractor that does that type of work. I do have Mr. Wesley Cobal. He's an architect for, on this project, and he has been architect for several projects for Agape Health Services. And also the MEP engineer, we have him on site as well. They're both from the Triangle area. So they did come down, just in case you had any additional questions that we may answer.
Okay, the floor is open, Commissioners.
I just want to make some comments. First of all, to all of our good people from the South Side. This initiative was started by the Commissioners. So it is, it is our desire for this to go forward and to be successful. So if you're thinking that we have any intentions of just saying no, that is not it. We want this to happen because we realize that where you live and where the nearest hospitals are and the services are is a task. It's a task getting what you need. And so it is the desire of this board to have exactly what you need. And it's my sincere prayer that we will be able to get this worked out to everyone's liking. And I just simply wanted to say that so you won't have any doubts about whether it's going to happen. We just need to work numbers. That's all I'm saying. We just simply need to work numbers because we're going to make it happen. That's why I am concerned. I am one of seven.
Randy?
Is there any, I don't see any reference to like a dedicated helicopter landing pad. Is there one there? Have you thought, I would certainly think you would need one.
We had, we did not think of that. But surely, if that's something, I mean, the property does belong to the county, and it is, there's some area available in the back of the, of the Health Center. We did include, you know, a, you know, a trauma area so that if we did have any, any emergencies for emergency services, that we can get the ambulance and everything, and we can treat them prior to waiting on the emergency services. But we can add the, a pad. I will kind of, Wesley, there wouldn't be no problem with that, right Wesley? Okay, well, there's room. And here's, I know there's a few acres.
Looks like there's room.
Yes, yes. But we could add that.
I, I think I saw Chris Newkirk is... Okay. Do we already have a designated area in Aurora for a helicopter to land?
Yes, we traditionally land over in the grass area next to the fire department. So almost right across the street. It's traditionally been a location that we plan to use here.
One of the other things, if, in the proposal, so the proposal did include, even before we, you know, there was some concern about some substance or materials that was in the ceiling. So we did include new ductwork because it's an open plenum. And we don't want anyone, as Wesley would state, breathing in any type of harmful materials and things like that. So it was already included in there to establish new ductwork. So, because right now, there's no ductwork up there, because it's open. So I did talk with one of the contractors. It did come out and give us some estimates on that in itself. They did include that. Also, you know, when you think about the amount, we also included in there, there's six air conditioners on the, on the site. Four of those air conditioners, the date on those air conditioners was, they were like 15 years old. The other two, there was no date on them. And, and so in that proposal, it does also include replacing the air conditioning units. So we tried to think of almost everything except for the helicopter pad. And, and, and so, but that's, I'm glad you brought that up. And, and so we really tried to be, you know, inclusive. Now, as we did state, we will, in collaboration, apply for that rural economic development, rural building reuse. 20,000, 20 jobs could create a grant funded in the amount of $200,000. So that will go towards that 700. It would be a deduction, so it would be deducted off of that. So quite naturally, we have done that before in Plymouth, at our Plymouth site. We were able to get about 32 jobs out of that site in the amount of about $400,000, and we were able to meet that. And quite naturally, if you don't meet it, then you pay $12,500 per job that we pay. Not you guys, but we have to pay that. And so we did meet that. When I find a report to the Economic Development Commission is that we were, we did receive that $400,000 with no payback. So we know that we will create a minimum of 20, 20 jobs. I'm kind of looking at that. I also put in your presentation a list of jobs about the amount they will pay. But we already know there's going to be a few more jobs that we still need down there. And, and so, but we want to kind of estimate the 20 jobs.
John?
Two questions, and then I'll make a statement. But let me make the statement first. I second Jerry's statement that he made earlier about this. This is critical to Aurora, and critical, it's a pivot point for them moving forward in revitalizing that town. So we are, we are appreciative of you coming forward. So everybody knows this. And as Jerry said, this is the initiative of the Commissioners. I personally had conversations with Carolina East about them coming in there. And they said no after, after some discussion. We recontacted at the time ECU Health about that. And we also talked with our Health Department about how we could put that all together. There wasn't another, there wasn't another solution out there. And we're grateful that Agape was able to, to put that together. Two questions. One is, how did you arrive at the numbers here in terms of the costs? Let me, did you, who provided you with that?
A contractor, as well as, he had subs to go out and actually go on site to provide the estimates for each job.
Okay.
For each, for, not each job, but for each section, like the electrical, the contractor went out and did that.
Okay, and if we had a project manager from our side involved in this, would you be willing to work with that type of a person?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Reddell, see if I could add to that. So Dr. McDuffie and I had conversations about that. It's my understanding that they intend on using the construction manager at risk project to do this so that you would get firm bids from the, from the contractor, and they would manage the entire project, and they would be held to that number so there wouldn't be overruns. The second piece of that is I had, I had conversations with their GC, who gave them the estimate. And we talked about the square footage, the per-square-foot number. And he indicated that they had done some recent renovation that was similar to this. And it came in at $107, or at $158 per square foot. You'll see, if you were to take the entire cost without the potential building renovation, it would come out to be about $172 per square foot. With the potential $200,000 in building reuse, it would drop that to about $130 per square foot for renovation. So we're right in the ballpark on what current jobs are bidding for a renovation. Also had a conversation because I knew the question came up about what a new build would be. And he said north of $450 a square foot is what it would be for a new build. And that's 4,700 square feet.
And the new building would be 2.1 million, based on the numbers that you had sent earlier, if you went that route. Chairman? Yes.
Look, I have no qualms about the ability of Agape to successfully manage this project. John, you probably don't know, but they did, just did the Plymouth project, which was essentially a gutted building to begin with. And they use a very competent architect, Wesley Cobal. He's here, Wesley has done multitudes of these things. Also, Agape has done several other projects of this magnitude. And to my knowledge, they have always managed them very, very, very well. So we don't have to worry about how our money is used and about it being used for what they say it's used for. Because Wesley will keep them straight.
Before it's all over with, I can tell you that.
He will.
Brian?
Sir, as Chairman, when we talk money, I know we've previewed this before as well. There is currently $3.47 million sitting in the Board's Healthcare Reserve Fund. Those are funds that the Board set aside specifically for healthcare initiatives. It would be our recommendation to you that if you chose to move forward with funding this project, that you pull funds from that $3.47 million to fund this project. The other piece of that is that, as we talked about earlier, our proposal to you would be to transfer the property to Agape Health Services under General Statute 168, 279, which means as long as they, and put a reversion clause in there, and they're familiar with what we're talking about. You've done this with prior property when you were engaging with, with other firms, so that they, you're allowed by statute to transmit that property to them at no cost as long as they're using it for a public purpose. And obviously, healthcare is a public purpose. The reversion clause in there would simply say that if they stop using the facility for healthcare, it would revert back to the county. So there's no, there's no risk there in losing the facility. So that would be what we would suggest to you. We probably do need to go in and survey out the lot because there's a big chunk of property down there. We can have further discussions about maybe some expansion if you want to put a pad there. But more than likely, you probably don't need a pad at the site because you got to have EMS to get to the, to the facility first and then package the patient. And then it's easy for them to move them across the street to the, to the fire department. So, but, but that's where we are looking at, as we previewed in the last meeting. Thank you.
Ed?
I got a couple of questions. You said that there was 30 miles, that was, the closest hospital was 30 miles from Aurora. And what are the hours that you'll be, that this clinic will be open?
Okay, so we, normally our clinics are open, of course, we 8:00 to 5:30, 8:00 to 6:00. But we are expanding hours now. Like I mentioned, today, our clinic here in Washington is open to 7 o'clock. We also open on Saturdays now from, from 8:00 to 1:00. Mariana will be going to be open all day on Saturdays now. I'm going to talk about the hours as we would. Mariana is our Director of Operations, and we're working on expanding hours because there's such a need for it.
Yes, just like, hello, Honorable Board. Just like Dr. McDuffie have mentioned, we're working right now on extended hours project. It's called the WAVE scheduling, where we are planning to be open 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. every day of the week, and also a full day on Friday. And during those hours, we're planning to provide the old services, primary care, integrative care, which is the behavioral health, as well as to have a pharmacy open on site. And we're looking into exploring, of course, with a high shortage of dental personnel, but we are looking into exploring the dental personnel to be also accessible and available like a more extended, extended hours as well.
Mr. Manager, the reuse grant is $250,000?
$200,000.
$200,000, or, and the total cost of the project?
So their estimate, their estimate is 810, 416 with the contingencies in there. And they're showing a potential $200,000 building reuse and renovation grant. Like Dr. McDuffie said, they've, they've had experience with this. They used that grant mechanism when they did their facility in Plymouth. This would be very similar to that. In fact, it would run through them, I believe. I don't think it would involve us. It would run directly through Agape.
Are we at all to make a motion now? Like, let's, let's go ahead and get these, some of these other questions, then we'll come back, come back to you.
Question number one is, will you do retail pharmacy also?
No, we will, it's, I mean, it's, it's an option.
Yeah.
But right now, we do 340B pharmacies. So for 340B pharmacy, you have to be a patient of the clinic, the Health Center, to utilize that, the pharmacy. However, retail is an option. It's just a lot of headache when you mix the 340B and retail together. And I'm not sure if we will really have enough space in that building to do retail. Like I said, but it is an option. It's something that I could speak...
I guess, from my perspective, I butchered to explore that. Okay. Number two is... Okay. Number two is, Brian, what do we need to do next to go forward?
So obviously, the board would need to point us in a direction that you are committed in moving forward. And a motion to that effect would work. Our next step would be then to set aside those funds out of the healthcare reserve fund, set up a project ordinance. We'd bring that back to you at the next meeting. And then also support Agape in their, in their grant initiative going to the state. And then we would need to start working on getting a survey, surveying out that lot, as well as working on the resolution that we would, that the board need to pass at the next meeting to be able to move that property to them so they can have it fee simple under NCGS 168, 279.
Mr. Manager, board, I make a motion that we move forward to the next stage of funding and drafting of the contract of the land.
Second?
Would you, would you gentlemen be willing to amend that so that we get the dollar amount in there?
Yes.
I, I think based on the pro forma that we have here, it would be best if we went ahead and put aside 610,416 or rounded off. And then the 200 will go directly to them. They have to have the property in hand, if I understand it correctly, to be able to qualify for the?
Reuse grant?
Yes, reuse grant.
The amendment is fine.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Any, any further discussion before we take a vote? Okay. All those in favor of moving ahead to have a survey, to be willing to, or to move the property over to Agape and to set aside money from our healthcare fund, 610,416? Anita likes to go right down to the dollar. So that's probably the best thing to do.
Only, only the other thing we need to do is put a time limit in there. I have greatest confidence in the world in Agape. I know they're going to perform, but we need to put like a two or a three year time limit for them to perform, otherwise they need the property back to us.
I think, I think with the people we have in the audience tonight, they're going, they're going to put the pressure on these guys to get it done.
Right.
That's right.
Okay. We got a motion and a second on the floor?
Is the two to three years included in there? Is there a time limit?
You want to do two years?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they can come, even if, even if they're done.
They're going to have it.
It's going to be done. It's going to be done. We can, we have to. So I have a problem is a minute.
I'd just like to say, only three years might even be better. I mean, I know they want to get it done as soon as possible, but I know they want to get it done at the best cost possible. And we're putting certain restraints on them to make sure that they get the very best bids they can get. I think the cost of building, buildings is going to go down. I think eventually the, there's going to be a lot of people looking for work. And if you don't push them too fast, maybe they'll get a better product, get a cheaper price, we'll save tax dollars for the public.
The commissioners that made the motion and the second, are we at two years or three years?
I don't have a problem with three years. I don't, or two years. It doesn't really matter.
They're ready to go.
Don't get ready to go, but give them three years.
All right, three, three years. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
We appreciate your support.
We will, for the community, it will not take us three years to do this. We will get right to work on it. And of course, you know, we got to finish all the architectural plans and things like that, but we will get on this. So we hope by next year.
Make us look good.
Oh, you're going to look good. That's right. We're going to make sure the community is satisfied. All right. Thank you all so much.
We'll talk from time to time. Bring us, give us a briefing on where you are.
We sure will. We'll keep you updated. All right. Thank you all so much.
Okay. We're, we're, we're just going to sit still for a second because I know some people are just here for that and they want to leave. So I'm going, I'm going to give everybody about two or three minutes if you would like to leave. This may be the best thing we do tonight. So. I got this ring doorbell that I, the only way I can get it is to cut it completely off. I've got, I've got this ring doorbell and a cam, and a camera, and I have a, it'll dang fit it off this morning. Yeah.
I have the same thing. So I was grabbing mine thinking it was big.
Yeah. I had everything in. Had everything. Yeah. Now, I guess I could go to the app.
And turn, yeah, notifications.
And turn it off. So.
Yes.
If I can, if, if you'll take your conversations, the ones that are standing up talking, if you'll take that outside, I would appreciate it. If, if someone would close that, and will you close that back door or Lloyd?
They've, please? They've already talked to Nutri too.
Oh.
Doing employee drug testing and stuff like that. Because right now, if they have an accident out there, that employee's got to go all the way to the person to get tested.
I, I was looking out there to see if our superintendent, and come on up. I was getting ready to call Terry Williams, but you'll probably do a better job. Good evening.
Don't sit down that way. He's telling me everything I know. So we're good. We're good. Well, thank you very much for having me here this evening. With the short notice, I do have a few folders for you for information I couldn't provide in advance. If you just take a few of them and test them, that'd be great. Need an extra? Do you have enough?
We need one more up here, I think.
Super excited to be here this evening. We, I will be providing a, an update on Washington Elementary School, which is our new school. But I wanted to first start with the exciting news that we received from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction last Wednesday. And what you have in front of you is the actual data from our schools. And I am so pleased to represent Bover County Schools and the Board of Education members who are here this evening to announce that Bover County Schools has been removed from the North Carolina Department of Public Construction's low performing list. And so we're very excited to that. So the State Board of Education recognized all 115 public school systems on Wednesday for their work. And we are super excited to say that as a low performing school district, our principals, our teachers, TAs, custodians, nurses, counselors, parents, community members, board of ed, anyone and everyone worked really hard to get us up and out of low performing. And just as a reminder, in 2019, we had three low performing schools. That was Northeast, P S Jones, and Snowden. And then right after that, we came out of those three low performing schools. And so headed into COVID, you had zero low performing schools. So what does low performing mean? If by chance on the accountability model, you score a D or an F, which we've never had an F under the accountability model, then you're deemed low performing. So as a low performing district, that would mean that more than 50% of your schools actually had a D or an F. And coming out of COVID, we did have seven or eight schools slide. So we put together essentially a four or five year plan. And I'm happy to say that as a district, we're out of low performing in two years. So super excited to say that. So what you have in front of you, and for those in the, in the audience, you will be able to find this on our website later this week, but also North Carolina Department of Public Instruction will also have it on their website. But just a few stats to listen to. Nine out of 12 of our schools that qualified or received a grade actually met or exceeded growth. Nine out of 12. Super excited. And nine out of 12 of our schools increased their school performance score by one point all the way up to seven points. And three of those schools actually had a seven point jump. And to put it in context, you're typically looking at a three point, four point jump in a year you would call a phenomenal year. But they hit seven points. Super excited. And that's P S Jones Middle School, John Cotton Taylor Elementary School, and also Chaco Innity Middle School. The other awesome part is 100% of your elementary and middle schools increased their school performance score. So what you're seeing is that, you know, the younger age in our, in our kindergarten moving through are really starting to gain the skill sets that we may have lost and even more so advancing further as we come along. So when you hear that from our elementarys and our middle schools, our high schools are very excited about the skill sets that those students are going to have on their way up through it. A few things. Chaco Innity Middle School changed their letter grade from a D to a C. Super excited for Kelly Makepeace, principal there and her team. Also excited for Paula Sherman and her team at Northeast Elementary School who went from a D to a C. But you'll also see on your sheet, I have four schools that are marked in pink or magenta, if you see that. Those four schools are all within four points of moving to a new letter grade one year from now. We really think we can do that. And that would be Washington High School, Southside High School, Northside High School, and John Cotton Taylor. John Cotton Taylor, we project that will move from a D to a C next year. Both Northside and Southside moving from a C to a B. And then of course, Washington coming out of low performing. But if you're the principal at P S Jones, she says, look, I'm six points away. You better include me in that pink. I just haven't added it there. And if you're Kelly Makepeace at Chaco Innity Middle School, she says they're hitting a B next year. And Mike Swinson says that they'll get to a B in two years. All very competitive people, but they know what's best for children. And so I don't want to count them out because in the past, some of those schools have actually had 13 point gains. So super excited to see this work, but we know we still have a fair amount of work. So we do have five low performing schools that we need to focus on. And that's Washington High School, P S Jones, John Small, S W Snowden, and, did I miss one? Washington High School, Snowden, P S Jones, John Small, and John Cotton Taylor. So we do anticipate within one year, three of those should come out of low performing. And in the second year, the remaining two should come out of low performing. But I'm really excited to put some emphasis on Snowden Elementary School. Let's talk about Snowden. If you look at a 47 and you think, my goodness, that's not where we want to be, I would tell you that's exactly where you want to be. Because two years ago, you were at a 40, one point away from the state's designation of an F. Remember, it's a 15 point scale. So if you have 39 or below, you're actually an F letter grade. Well, coming out of COVID, Snowden was a 40, right on the dot, teetering. But thank you to Dr. Patricia Horton and her team. In fact, seven points over two years. We should be applauding what's happening in Snowden in that regard. To that point, last year Snowden had a teacher pass away in the middle of the year. It had several teachers actually not teaching grade levels. They were lacking a counselor at one point and even missing an assistant principal. And so this year, they have a counselor, they have a principal, they're mostly staffed. We're trying to get two more down there. But in fact, seven points with a staff that had some holes in it, phenomenal down there at Snowden. So I want to congratulate them. So where does this lead us now? Well, we're off to a new school year. So we just finished two full weeks. We're into the third week. Our, our principals will be conducting and presenting their school improvement plans to the Board of Education, starting on the September 17th and then into October as well. But right now, we're riding a lot of energy of encouragement, seeing great things with our children. Letters training really worked well for our students and our staff. But I just can't say enough about the decisions of our board in terms of what they've done for the school system to set our administrators and our teachers and staff to be successful. And this is a really great moving point. So I just want to congratulate everyone who's been supportive of this. And I can't say enough, coming out of low performing and feeling that energy, we're in a really great position moving forward. Any questions about the school performance scores at this time?
Any, anyone have a question?
Excellent.
I just think we need to congratulate, I just think that we need to congratulate the work that you and the staff have done since COVID.
Thank you.
And I think it's remarkable and we're looking for big and better things.
Absolutely. And I will share, I will share that congratulations with our team and.
Please.
But I will always say, having been a teacher of 14 years, chemistry and forensic science, I will always say that there's nothing greater than a teacher in a classroom. So we're still looking for highly qualified teachers to be a part of our team. So we're excited. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
All right. So the other update I want to provide with, to you, is about, is about Washington Elementary School. So this is our new pre-K through three school that shall open August of 2026. And I wanted to bring some reminder information, just with a little other information for you. And this information was presented to the Board of Education last week by Mr. Height, the Height Associates. And that team is the architect for this project. So you should see in your folder, the initial and remaining current timeline. And so I'm excited to say that we're on time and we have been on time. And just as a reminder, when you win a $42 million needs-based public school capital fund grant, I have to slow down when I say that. That money is used for planning services as well. So after the grant is awarded, it does seem to slow down a little bit, but lots of things happening behind the scenes, meaning you don't actually see the earth move yet. So if you look at your timeline, you'll see that Mr. Height and Height Associates has in fact created a design. You'll see that behind your timeline. And you'll see the weeks that went through April, May, and June in terms of that design development and completing the construction documents. And so now Height Associates is submitting those documents to the Department of Public Construction for their strategic planning. So they can look at those and make any corrections or edits, or for that matter, approve them. They're also going to the Department of Insurance. And then if you look in October, you'll see that the complete agency reviews will have been finalized. And then it will go out for bid. If you look at the horizontal line from October to November. And so the board is looking at putting this out probably the third week of October. And then it would stay out for 30 days. So we anticipate that those bids will come back to the board November 21st, which is a Thursday before Thanksgiving. And that way Height Associates can align them and get them prepped for the board meeting in December. And then the Board of Education would review those documents and then make decisions. I, as the superintendent, do not make those decisions. Your Board of Education makes the decision on who the actual contractor would be to build the school. And then if you notice in 2025 is when you would see construction and Height Associates is projecting an 18 month build time. So then if you look at May of 2026, right around Memorial Day is when Eastern Elementary School would close for the year. And so all of our instructional time and alignment will be done. And so that way the children would go home right around Memorial Day, not the first week or second week of June. And to that, then we're looking at a partnership with Bover County Sheriff's Office and other emergency management. So after the building is cleaned out, then they can do some training, training exercises in the building. Always great to have opportunities for our law enforcement and emergency management. And when they finish that training, then the building would be knocked down. And I'm assuming some of that training will help us knock it down, which is pretty exciting. All right. So to that point, then sometime in July, you would start to see after all the landscape is starting to be finalized, you'll see the final roads come in. And then of course, in August, the doors will open at the end of August. And so what I'm projecting is that somewhere around January, you might have a, a financial groundbreaking. That's up for the board to schedule. So with that, we appear to be on time. The other part of that is with school finances. In terms of the budget, well, once the actual bid process is approved and it's sent out, and the bids come back in, and the Board of Education then votes on the actual contractor, then the alignment of a budget would then be submitted to the county. So then you and I get to work well together in that regard. So right now... So right now, not one penny of this grant has been spent. Not one invoice has been received for this project. And so in short, anytime that we are, in fact, going to ask to actually finalize any type of invoice and send payment, that's going to come back through the county and we're going to work very well together in that regard. So just to put it out there, $42 million grant from the state, $10 million from our county commissioners. Thank you so much. And in fact, Height Associates does project that you will be under budget or very close to budget and does not project any over budget at this time. And so if you look at the last document that I've provided for you, these are just a couple of cover sheets to a greater document. If by chance you're able to attend this Thursday's progress meeting, which is at 12:00 noon off of Pierce Street over there, you'll see something a little bit greater. And Mr. Height will be there to answer, you know, more specific questions. But if you'll see the general design of the building. And so it does face Pennsylvania Avenue alongside Hudnall. So you are on the back property behind Eastern Elementary School right now, in case people don't really know. But to that, it will be a pre-K through 3 school, which we're excited about. And then on page three of that, you'll actually see the design in terms of the way it's structured. And to give people a visual, if you want to know what the outside might look like, then just drive through the parking lot of P.S. Jones and look to your right and look to your left. And those are typical buildings that Height Associates has constructed in the past that have worked very well for us in Beaufort County schools. Any questions about information or something that I didn't cover that you'd like to know about?
Questions?
I was at the board meeting the other night. He talked about the three entry and exit for the different age groups.
Yes, sir.
Could you just go over that real quick?
Yes. It's actually, when you think about it, let me just turn to that page. So you have car rider lines. You have bus lines. And so your car riders are dropped off in a separate place where your bus riders are. So there'll be two points of entry for each one of those groups. And as the car riders come in, they will drop off in front of the school and they'll loop back out, very similar to P.S. Jones. Bus riders will do the same coming in off of the alternative entrance. And in short, your riders, bus riders, will come in on the right-hand side of the building. However, there is a road that goes behind the building, and that's required. It's an emergency access road. You have to have it there. But the other part of that is pre-K students cannot buckle themselves in and out of car seats. And we want to give parents a greater safety and security moment with their children. And so they'll come in off of the access road in the back and come around to the right-hand side of the building. So your pre-K vehicles, or your pre-K students who are driven by their parents will not be coming into the regular car line. But they'll have a drop off in another designated area that's very intentional so they have a little bit more time for safety and security. So no one, you know, our hope is that no one ever gets injured in a car rider line.
Questions or comments?
I have one question.
Yes. This doesn't concern what we've been discussing here, but on school property in Beaufort County, now that the sheriff is in the schools, does the sheriff have complete autonomy to bring criminal charges for criminal acts on school property by anyone?
I believe so.
He does not have to come to you for permission?
No. He does not have to come for me for permission. Just so people understand, in public schools, and specifically Beaufort County schools, we operate on the student code of conduct. It's not our job to make a decision as to whether it's a criminal act or not. So in short, when we do have concern that's greater than what's defined in the student code of conduct, clearly, we're working with the school resource officer, the police officer on site to make determines as to what next step should happen. However, you know, your sheriff and law enforcement have decision-making rights in terms of what goes on beyond the student code of conduct.
Why was not the recent destructive activity at the Washington High School at the close of the school year reported as criminal activity?
Well, I think some of that's been blown out of proportion, to be honest. We've had one cafeteria table that was broken. It was $1,700. In three different hallways, children did not really realize what was happening in other hallways. Fourteen students entered the building. And to that, some went down hallway A and maybe used silly string and thought they were going to sleep overnight. And students went, seriously. And students went down, say, hallway B and put toilet paper out and thought it was funny and were going to be there to clean it up in the morning. And students, see, went down into a cafeteria and just by happenstance stood on a table and broke a table and flipped it to the side based on their weight. And then made a slip and slide down there. I call it a slip and slide. They poured things on the floor. So in that, the principal made a decision. And I supported the principal's decision to look at it as an act within the student code of conduct, basically what was happening in the building. And parents have been paying back that money for that table.
Has all the money been paid back?
Not yet.
Anyone else? Okay. I've had to cut my phone off. What time is it?
6:20.
So we accommodated your 7:15?
Yeah. Bad duty tonight. But thank you so much. Really appreciate it. And always feel free to come into our schools anytime. You don't need my permission. But please just walk in, check in. You're welcome to walk through the buildings and see really great things happening in classrooms. So thank you for your support as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to the public comments. And we have eight people. Just to remind, as I call you up, you have three minutes. We will have on the screens tonight for the first time, the three-minute limitation. It's a little bit hard to see it from over there. When you hit the three-minute mark, I will let you know. And so if you will, when you come up here, give your name and your three minutes starts. So the first one I have on the list is Joanne. I'm going to call just by the first name. And also to remind the group, because we have people that's never been in here, this is not a question and answer. It's not a back-and-forth thing. It's your chance to make a comment to the public. And that's it. So if you ask a question and we look like dumbfounded and we're not answering it, that's why. You know? So we'll start the clock with your time.
Okay. I didn't prepare a statement tonight. I'm really not used to speaking. However, I'm here for the voice of my grandchildren and what they have experienced. The last time I came, I gave handouts, which ended up really biting us because they used it against us, what the children had experienced at the hands of DSS. They turned it on us and said that they had communicated with their mother. And that's how that came about, which was not the truth. So I don't have a handout for you tonight. Since the May 22nd, when the children were removed from my home, a lot has happened, to the point that it's unbelievable. They entered when all this started. They were, Savannah and Jaden Strater were under unsecured custody. Since that time, they have been moved, separated in several different placements. Jaden has been IBC'd, I believe, seven times. At this time, he's in Beaufort Hospital. I spoke to him on September 5th. I was able to go in and see him because they had not on his orders. It did not say he could not have any visitation. I went in and I spent about two hours with him. And I learned a lot. I was asked to leave. The nurse came in there and told me that DSS had said he could have no visitors. And I was asked to leave at that point. We've since received court orders, copies of court orders. And DSS has made statements that were not court-ordered. They've made actions that were not court-ordered. And so that's basically where we are. Right now, Jaden, they're wanting to put him under a secured custody level four, which is not court-ordered. And this is extremely distressing. My conversation with Jaden went like this, that he had been there for five days at the hospital. He had not changed his clothes in four days because DSS had not brought him any clothes over there. They had not, they did not come into the hospital to see him. When I went in, Nurse Fran was the one that took me back. She asked me, she said, "There's nothing in the papers that says he cannot have visitors. So I'm going to let you see him. However, I need to ask his permission before you speak with him." So I said, "Of course." So at that point, of course, he said, "For me to come on in." So our visit began.
Your time is up. Thank you. One more time. Stuart Ham was speaking on the medical clinic in Aurora. So I'm assuming he's left. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gail Breed, and I live at 140 Harper-Nichol Place in Washington. And I've returned to share the highlights being presented this evening at the city council regarding the Grace Harwell Martin Senior Center fees program. This program exclusively impacts our seniors, our county seniors. And then I'll close with a desired solution. After I finish my comments, I'll have a package of information to give to you. With a deep dive into the city budget, here's what we found. You all provided the requested amount of $20,000 for this fiscal year. The official budget documentation created by the city identifies only $1,100 as fees to be collected from county seniors. However, the fees program introduced in July is designed to generate an additional $227,500 above last year's budget. The senior center budget for FY '24, '25 is $498,980. And for FY '23, '24 was $285,382. It's interesting, isn't it, that the difference is $227,500, exactly the same amount of revenue the city expects to collect from the 1,300 over-county seniors this year? The city budget narrative The city budget narrative has no justification for why or how this additional quarter of a million dollars will be allocated. After not charging fees for 29 years, this appears to be a knee jerk reaction to fill gaps in the city's budget. The seniors' response is, if you tell me to pay up or get out, I'm out. Fifty percent of the county seniors have voted with their feet and it's a matter of time before there's more fallout. By charging fees, the city has lost the hope of collecting $113,750, as well as the current funding provided by the state and federal programs. The seniors are cleared. The city plan to charge fees needs to be abandoned. To think a quarter of a million dollars for the town budget can be provided by 1,300 rural fixed income seniors is untenable. The solution lies in developing policies and procedures to include stakeholders, city council members, and county commissioners. This solution must also identify an equitable funding formula for seniors' well-being, not just in Washington, but in all seven municipalities. I have one additional document in your package showing recreational funding per capita by population. Washington has the largest population with only $4.05 per capita, while Pantigo with the lowest population has $30.49.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is Juanita.
I'm Juanita Houston. You know, I've been here several times, as well as my husband. I came to you for help. And Mr. Langley told me in June, you guys didn't handle that. You do. Your budget says that you employ 116 social service workers and you guys do employ the lawyer for this county. My case is stalled with DSS. They have held my children for 11 months with not one single hearing where me or my husband has got to speak or prevent evidence. You guys signed a contract in June with the Department of Social Health and Human Services, which does cover the social services. You can't issue corrective action plans. You know there are children being abused. You know that my son went missing from two months as he ran away from a group home they placed him in with no court order, which is illegal. Your employees are not following the law. You employ them, you pay them. You asked that attorney to come and speak with you and he sent a letter. Me, as an employee, if I tell my boss I'm not coming, I'm fired. So where is the accountability? Why are you not doing anything? This is your job. This is why we elected you. This is why we pay taxes. And right now, currently, there's a class action lawsuit that was filed by the Disability Rights of North Carolina for foster children. There's 27 families and that number is growing. Beaufort County will not be excluded. I have filed my own complaint. By the contract you signed in June, you are responsible to pay whatever is awarded. And you guys have put yourself in that position. I'm asking you to stand up for our children. I'm asking you to hold your employees accountable. It is not fair and it is not right. My son was physically, sexually assaulted. He was withheld food. He was moved without a court order. I wasn't even allowed to see him for six weeks. That is illegal. Your employees are acting illegally and you're allowing it. This is what the contract says that you signed in June. The county will provide leadership for ensuring that 40.5% of children who enter the foster care system in a 12-month period are discharged to permanency within 12 minutes, 12 months, I'm sorry, of entering foster care. The leadership. Mr. Waters, you are chairman. You are the leader of this board. You guys need to investigate and you need to look at what's going on. I'm not the only parent that's coming to you. I am recruiting other parents. I will not be quiet. You will hear from me every month. I will be there when it's time to vote. I am your citizen. I know other citizens. This is not right. I am angry. I am frustrated and this is wrong. I've told you about the payments that come from social security for these children. You heard her speak of how they are trying to IVC her child. That's what they did to mine. That's when he ran away. Because they locked him in a facility where he was abused and no one would listen. They get more money the more drugs they can push on these children, the more facilities they can put them in, they classify them by levels. It is about money. And as a quote by North Carolina State Conference of NAACP, they filed suit as well and it's ongoing.
Thank you. Peter.
Good evening. Peter Karanovich, I live in Bellhaven. I'm down here to talk about the Grace Martin Senior Citizen Building. This is my third time down here at a meeting about the scenario that's going on back and forth. And I understand you gentlemen want to give the city the money. They want more, it's back and forth, back and forth. I get that. I've been here three years. I pay North Carolina taxes. I pay county taxes. I don't have any children in the school system whatsoever. No grandchildren in the school system whatsoever. You can take my portion of tax money and put it towards the cause to keep the building as it is. I've been going to the Grace Miller Building for, Martin Building for a year now. I'm down there sometimes two times, three times a week. And while I'm in the building, I go to the store, get fuel. I pay taxes in the town. I eat in town. I support the locals. And it's a reason for me to come from Bellhaven to here. We don't have a senior citizen application in Bellhaven. So I come here. I enjoy coming here. Got a great view. Most of the people I know I dance with are great. And I'd like to continue that. I'd like for you guys to solve this thing so we can continue having fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry. He was here to speak on the clinic. Okay. Steve. Is Steve, Steve left? Okay. Bradley. Left it? Okay. I guess they were satisfied with the vote. Okay, we're down to the legislative updates and I do not see, okay.
Nobody's here, but I just want to remind the board that next Wednesday, September 18th at 8 o'clock, we're having a breakfast meeting. The board's having a breakfast meeting with Senator Brinson at the corporate extension conference room. That will be a called meeting, a noticed meeting because they'll probably, we anticipate more than the majority of the board will be there. But wanted to send that to everybody, but wanted to make sure that was out there so everybody knew. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody got that on your calendar? Eight o'clock Wednesday of next week. That's at the extension Dag Building, must people call it Dag Building. All right, we're down to items for consent. Is there any item that you would like to pull?
I'd like to pull item 12 for a couple of votes.
All right, we're gonna pull item 12. Anyone else? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of items excluding number 12, the broadband understanding, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. All right, we're down to the public hearing from our planning department. Joshua? And before you start, I'm gonna try to do it better this time. They need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of going into the public hearing as it relates to naming a private road, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We got a application, which is a petition to name private road. It was submitted by Harold Smith. It was in anticipation of assigning addresses for a future subdivision that will have access via that right of way. And according to the county's road naming and addressing ordinance, the road name would need to be established before addresses could be assigned. There are two unrecorded subdivision plaits which are attached or would be along with the application. And each of them delineate the same 50-foot private road. And this would be named on approval of this actual plat. So after, if the board approves this road naming, it will be assigned on the plat and then once recorded and gone through the process of the plat approval, then it would be established. The notices for the public hearing were adequately advertised. It appeared in the Daily News on September 24th and September 31st. And then additionally, notices were posted at Beaufort County Courthouse 10 days prior to the hearing today. In accordance with the county's ordinance, the three road name suggestions that were given in order of preference were Roberts Way, Ellis Arthur Drive, and Puppy Drum Drive. And then after review of the proposed names, the staff has determined that the first choice, Roberts Way, does not duplicate any existing road names in the county nor is there any sound alikes presented. And that's what we recommend the approval of. And if anyone has any questions on those few maps or the application?
Anyone have a question or a comment? Okay, we have to open the floor. We did not have anyone register for the public hearing. But it's not too late if you're here. Now, this is on the north side, so the people that are here from the south side, it doesn't affect your, your name on a road, so. Okay, see you none. Entertain a motion to-
Motion to come out of public hearing.
Got a motion to come out, but have a second. All right, we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Cut to come out of session.
Okay. All right.
As a matter of disclosure, I did this subdivision. I do not see a conflict of interest me voting on a road name.
I, I don't either. Any commissioner want to challenge that? Okay, well, we're, nobody's gonna challenge that. It's, so, need, need a motion to, to approve the name of Roberts Way.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Everybody raise your right hand if you're in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you mind if we go ahead and deal with number 12 that was pulled from the consent agenda?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. That's on page 47 for the commissioner's benefit. Ted, you wanna?
Okay, this, this is only gonna take a minute. The reason I pulled this from the consent agenda is I have a lot of citizens of the county telling me that they do not believe that the county is putting millions of dollars into, into installing internet in places that there's nobody at. Otherwise, the telephone company would have already been there and installed it to get the money. So this, the whole purpose of this is to force these commissioners to vote to show you that they're spending millions on the internet in Beaufort County. We have a lot of taxpayers who don't believe that, so that's, that's me.
Okay, we've heard that comment. We still need to pass the, yes, go ahead, John.
They're not running internet down roads and down pools to nowhere. I mean, they're going past all kinds of people. And that's, I don't know what you're hearing, but I'm hearing a whole bunch of people really happy.
Well, John, I've looked at the maps, if you recall, when all this stuff came by and the areas that were proposed for, for the installation, there was nobody living there. So, but again, let's look at it from the standpoint of capitalism. And that is, if there were enough people there who wanted the internet, the telephone companies would have been in there and installed the internet. This idea about broadband came from the Obama administration. And it is a part of the subversion of America by getting everybody with a modem in their house. And that modem is a spy port. You can be monitored, listened to, and a whole bunch of bad things can happen to you because of this. Witness what happened in Australia during COVID. Queensland Province of, Province of Australia, you had to report in daily on the internet. So just be aware that this is very subtle and when it gets you by the throat, it's gonna be too late.
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. All right, we're down to items for discussion. Our tax assessor. He's here with good news.
That's not good news?
It's not good or bad, it's informative. It's what I look at it.
How are y'all doing this evening? Good, well? Sir?
Actus in your elevator.
That's exactly what I'm doing, exactly. So what I'm actually up here for is, we're gonna begin, my office is beginning to start getting out ahead of the revaluations, which will be early next year. We're meeting with groups. I've got a couple of meetings coming up soon, meeting with Bellhaven Rotary, I believe, even this week. Meeting with some others. I want to get ahead of that and tell my bosses the stuff before I tell the groups. So I wanted to go over this real quick with y'all. I wanted y'all to hear some of this, what you have a little bit of understanding where I'm coming from. And I want to know, even though that I do try to be jovial, some of this is some of the most important things you'll hear tonight. Because a lot of this is long reaching effect. So we're gonna be talking briefly about different numbers. We're gonna talk a little bit about some of the changes that'll happen with revale. And while I'll make it brief, this will be the first of many times y'all are gonna hear about this with me here, also at meetings and different things. I'm always able to be in history, any public meeting that y'all desire. So moving to complexity issues, I believe was, if I put my stuff in order, hopefully. So complexity issues, one of the things that we were noticing, one of the things that we were having, we are making a lot of changes from the last revaluation. And what I mean from that is, the last revaluation happened in 2018. So normally, eight-year cycle, we've moved to a seven. The Department of Revenue usually says to go down around a four. We've moved to a seven, though. We're then moving to a six. I feel that this county and the board will agree, that's a pretty good number for us. It gets us in a middle space. It's not, it's, it's, it's good for where the market is here. That said, one thing that we're doing is we're actually taking a serious look at market areas. What market areas are in the last revale, the way that market areas were used, and they are in most counties, that we call neighborhoods occasionally, they're used to put influence in. So if you go in somewhere like Cypress Landing, you may use base adjustment numbers in that area. So you might say Cypress Landing has a plus something or a negative something. The neighborhood next door may have a negative something or a plus something. There are ways that you can say economically, there's more market, there's more sale, there's more desirability, or there's less, or different factors to let us trim numbers. Why that matters is, one thing that we've noticed during this reevaluation is the market areas from 2018, some of them cross the entire county. We've had, we've had market areas that are, are as wide as this county are. So you can see in the maps, we've actually done a pretty good job so far. Work with Vincent Evaluations, of course, which is our reevaluation vendor. We've also, my staff has also been going over a lot of this, too. You can see a lot of condensing. You can see a lot of the, the color becoming a lot tighter. You can see a lot of those areas becoming more consistent. I will say, we are not, we're not finished. There's still a lot of work going on in the county in this last minute, the cleanups, these changes. Washington is currently going through a lot of, we're, we're looking at a lot of things. Because commercial tends to be one of the last things you do in revale. You look at your commercial income numbers and your, and your values in commercials. So Washington having a lot of it, one reason you're still seeing a lot of fragmentation there. That's all getting worked out. It's becoming, we're looking at, at properties that are similar. We want to make sure that's exactly what they are, that they're somewhat similar. We don't believe that a neighborhood should be mile, miles and miles wide for the most part. So that never happens, but it shouldn't be as it was. Another thing that we've actually been looking at is the sales ratios. I'm using this example again, I had it in front of you gentlemen before. The sales ratios, just for example, for property price, 89,000 at the revaluation. It sells for 100,000 after that, and the sales ratio is 89.89. So currently, and why I mention that, the county is around a 63.4% sales ratio. That is from numbers we supply to the state. That's from my Department of Revenue numbers. That is an average. So when I say that, we look at mediums and averages, a lot in, in my line of work. That is across the county. That's one thing I'm here to briefly mention to y'all tonight. This is important. When I speak to groups, when I speak to individuals, they say to me, oh, that means I'm going up 37, 40%. No, that means across this county, different sales, commercial, waterfront, different things. Some have gone up way more than that, some have not gone up as much as others. Some areas have not gone up as much. Some may have been valued a little high than they should have maybe even been in the last revale. Or maybe they're much lower and more conservative than they should have been in the last revale. What that means is, that's around where that average is. So why that's important, the county will not see some fixed number of increase in their bill. That's not how that works. You don't, you will never believe how many times I have to tell people that. That's not how that works. You have neighborhoods, again, back to where I started with that. You have pockets, you have areas. You have areas that sell better or, or not as much as others. That's always gonna be the way of it. It was that way in Mecklenburg, it's that way in, in Washington County, it's the way in Wake County. It's everywhere. And in this county, it's gonna be the same. So we're focusing to make sure that we are giving everything it's due attention. We're making sure we're not doing sweeping everything, get some weird raised percent or something like that. We're trying to make sure it's under the proper amount of microscope. With that said, I also provided a graph with the recent county overall tax value. That's due in part to, it's due in part to new construction. We have certainly had more of that in the last couple of years than, than we've had in some of the years prior. It's also due to some of the property coming out of present use value, as you gentlemen are aware of. We, we have removed some things out of exempt programs. That is another reason for some of that increase. The other thing is to say, we have found a lot of physical discrepancies on cars. That happens. I've worked in a lot of revaluations. I don't know if I've ever been in one that didn't have more than 10% of the time that you're gonna see a little something. Everyone doesn't get a permit. Every, everything doesn't require a permit. You, you may go somewhere and see a small porch or something or a deck and we can argue about it, but they didn't get a permit and we're gonna pick that up. You may go find a two-car garage. You don't know what you're gonna find. And that's a lot of what we're seeing. But for sure, I'm the first to admit, you also may go and we may have that two-car garage, larger or smaller than it really is on second look. So some of the things we're doing there is we're really trying to get in and reduce the number of codes we use in there, like, like a finish this or a, or unfinished that. We're trying to make that more condensed, to be easier to understand for the customer and for ourselves. We're also simplifying the landlines. What I mean by that, this is something I've spoken with several of you about in the past. There is a lot of soil types in this county. And traditionally, we've made every soil type with a different value on the cars. We've gone away from that and broke it up as the class, which is used in North Carolina. So it, the soil types belong to a certain class, class one, class two, class three. So it will represent that on the card, making that much easier to understand. That will also be another thing. We've also, again, working on the accuracy of land descriptions, building descriptions, consolidating codes. What the revale doesn't affect, I all the time hear, oh my gosh, my boat's going up. Well, your boat probably did go up, because boat sales were up last couple of years. It has nothing to do with the evaluation. Revaluation does not affect car values, personal property values, meaning trailers, most mobile homes. I say that because there are certain factors that can make that a real property, you know, taking the tongue off, a double Y on, you know, for that matter, different things can be real property. Small changes, again, to forest and farm, you know, won't be major swings there. If you're in the farm program, there might be, the state does change some of their numbers, but it won't be a huge change in those values. Exemption's are reviewed, but they do not change for being exempt unless there's something we're gonna find. In other words, if Mr. and Mrs. Smith have elderly exemption, we don't remove that and require them to reapply for the revale. That said, we do have to apply that percent change to their thing. That's something my staff will be working on, making sure that the 50% and the percents we apply to work with those revaluation numbers. That's it in a nutshell. Is there a lot more? Absolutely, there's a lot more. But I wanted to hit the most important parts to me, which is the market is up. Market stayed up. The last couple of years, we have seen it still in this county, just still inch up a little bit. Some people said it's falling. If it is, I haven't seen it. The realtors I'm talking to have not seen it yet, slowed down, I'll freely admit that. But we're still seeing a strong, strong real estate market here in many places. We're still seeing tons of growth since 18. And remember, that's where the last time, that's where these, these values were put in place on the basis of 18. So from there, we have certainly grown. I have people come to me sometimes and say, well, I might go up double. It is possible. You may not go up at all in your value, but you're pretty likely to go up. I'll just be honest, because the market's going up. And that's the way the revaluation is built to be. Any questions?
Questions? Randy?
Yeah, it, it sounds like a lot of detail here. Would you, is it a true statement to say this is the most detail you have ever done a revaluation?
No, and only, I'll be very careful. I, I, we're trying really hard, I'll be honest, try to be really honest. I, I was once mandated to go into a county by law, by the legislature, redo a whole revaluation. But I will say here, one thing that we're trying to do very carefully is ride the line between where we are paying as much attention as possible, but we're also getting everything so that can be understood. And I think that's a, that's a really hard thing to do at times, and that's something we need in this county. Because I don't want, I do not want to speak to someone and say, you're FGR, you're ABD, you're whatever, and then look at me like I'm crazy. We want less of that, we want more of that consistency. We want my staff to better understand that. Once the revale team is gone, my staff's to live here. So we want to be able to afford that. So I would certainly say, pretty darn close. We've put as much effort, and I believe the company has as well.
John?
What, what is the timeline and the notices going out?
Good question. The timeline is, we're still projecting early February, end of January on notices. I've always preferred end of January on notices. I feel it gives you a reasonable amount of time to do everything on y'all's end as far as appeals and everything else. Hopefully, that'll give people time to digest everything and as far as that goes. And also, there are- And also, there are counties that try to do it around Christmas, you won't catch me recommending that. You're going to not catch me recommending that if I can help you. So that was why we kind of are trying to land on that. Now that said, we'll move a day or two, that's why I'm being honest and saying, I'm aiming for the end of January, eh, everybody say against them like that.
Yeah, and that's of twenty twenty-five, right?
Of course, yes, sir. As I said, yeah, but it is, we're, we're already out of the twenty-four, so it's certainly not happened already.
Let me just point out one thing, while there are a lot of property values that have literally doubled, and some that I know of that have tripled in the last, since the last revaluation. Taxpayers should not be too upset about this, because it all depends on how much money the county spends. The legislature requires, when we do this revale, that we eventually, as a part of the revale, do a revenue neutral number. So the fact that stuff has gone way up, more than likely, the tax rate in Beaufort County is actually going to go down, the rate's going to go down, that doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going to go down, but hopefully, it'll go down.
Well, one thing that I like to remind people of, everywhere I've worked, and where I have worked, I worked on revaluations solely for a while, and I worked in another county. One thing I like to remind everybody is, is, is we are speaking in averages, again, we are speaking in averages. Some will go up, some will go down, even at the top of market, I've seen that. You're still going to see some things, but when it comes to the bill, I tell people you're going to have to wait. You gentlemen will set that bill, you'll set it based on budgetary requirements, with of course, the work of the county here, and all I'm trying to do is make sure your value's correct. Did you?
Brian?
Yeah, just, just one moment of clarification, there was a former county commissioner who had an article about revaluation, and in his column, he wrote that revenue neutral was the exact same amount of revenue that the county received in the prior year. That is not the case. It does allow for normal growth, you look at the growth over the last eight years, and you're allowed for that growth, because you would have gotten that growth anyway. So just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that. Lloyd actually had a conversation with him about it.
I did feel that I wanted to clarify that with the gentlemen, so yes.
Any, anyone else? Do you, do you want me to go with you to the Rotary Club?
I'm welcome, anyone who wants to go to the Rotary Club, they would like, I know that what we're going to do is, we're going to talk about this a little bit, and I am going to try to be a little more specific about even, but to be honest, we're not finalized, we've not finalized all the values. So I do have people saying, how much am I going up? I'm not, we don't know yet, we're still working out those last-minute changes, make sure we're as dead on as we can be. I want to be the most accurate I can be, period.
I will, I will pick up Ed and both of us for Gary.
Understood.
We, we might get, we might get less telephone calls if we go ahead and go.
Right, I'm not Brett.
Yeah, right, I'll tell you, don't take me.
It's never good when the county manager's looking at me going, no.
We've had some fun touches. It's a break time, so we'll be back in ten minutes. Thank you. Okay, we're coming back out of our recess, and our speaker is Ann Williams from Soul and Water. Ann?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The district applied for a three thousand dollar grant from the North Carolina State Grange to assist with legal and survey costs associated with a current Bar Land Preservation Trust Fund grant. The grant was awarded, the grant is one hundred percent funded by the Grange, no match is required from Beaufort County. Beaufort Soul and Water Conservation District's Board of Supervisors recommends the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners accept the three thousand dollar grant award and adopt the budget amendment provided for your review tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Anybody have a question for Ann? Otherwise, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of accepting the North Carolina State Grange grant of three thousand dollars, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
How about those of us that are opposed? Do we get to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're opposing the grant coming through this?
Yep.
Okay, well.
I'm good for farming.
We won't go there, Ann. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're down to the sheriff's presentation, and when you finish that, you can go right into the vehicle purchase.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners, for our moment here tonight. I was asked to come do a update brief on school resource officers and answer any questions you may have. I do have a sheriff's office update I'd like to breeze through, just to give you a snapshot of what the last twelve months will look like, has looked like. And so we are in the schools, every school is now equipped, supplied with one school resource officer, and we're trained to the standards of one required, and, and training above and beyond. And in a power, if you will allow me, in a slide, I'll go over the training and, and the expectations we had on our equipped SROs, and, and before that, do you have any questions before I get started? Anything I can kind of like get targeted in my mind while you're?
I have the same as you.
Okay, we'll just go with the slideshow. All right, on the, does each one of have a copy in front of you, by Dan? So the expectations this year in twenty twenty-four, you'll see the, the seventeen thousand calls that came in the nine-one-one center. Actually, a, we did a update on this morning, and the seven thousand seven hundred calls for the deputies that responded to calls of berries from overdose to domestic violence, the IVCs, and twenty twenty-four introduced a break, a lot of break in the enters, but we, or larcenies, and we've, we've conducted ourselves investigations and found many of those, enclosed them. This year, more than four hundred felony cases, and this year's the Beaufort County personnel has accumulated, accumulated, leave league, completed over six hundred and eighty hours of training. Twenty twenty-four is our year of training, is our password. We stay in training, we're not buying, we're not purchasing a whole lot, other than what you'll hear on equipment tonight, but twenty twenty-four is our year of training, and we'll continue to advance our, our abilities. So this year, the detention center housed over eight hundred and eighty-five, as you can take a snapshot of that. Any question on that slide? Next slide. Is the organizational chart, when I came into the office, this was the organizational chart that I equipped. As you can see, it minimizes the liability of the sheriff's office to show a, like, a seven to one ratio of supervision, so it doesn't have the, the appearance or the ability to get lost in leadership, in supervision. They do account for training, they account for their time, they account for a lot of the accountability items that many, many meetings in the past, Commissioner asked about who's accountable for the time and the time checks. This was the demonstration I was hoping you had that night. Next slide. We've installed the resource officers in every public school, all SROs are certified to be in the schools, have received specialized training, and the hours, you can see the breakdown of hours. If you look at some of the rapid deployment, contact and cover principles, direct threat engagement, tourniquet and ORCAN applications, these are advanced training that the deputies don't typically get unless they sign up for it. We put this training in place because that, that school property, that campus is a, you're isolated there until you get back up your route, or you get back up there. Any questions about this slide? Next slide. This is the live picture of the nine-one-one center. It's that colorful, and it is that, that relaxing as well, but the nine-one-one telecommunicators, you know, after, after the remodel, our applications, because we get our application through sit-ins, through observation periods, and the, the mood that this new facility is providing, we actually got new applications in because of the sit-ins and the updated center. But, and of course, and what you don't see is the updated software that went into this program, and we thank the nine-one-one board for the budgeted decision, with y'all's help. Yes, sir.
Did you get video capability in here?
We do have.
With new software, can a, can a caller shoot you video?
Nah, it's not being utilized if we have.
Okay.
It's not one of our normal, but does it have equipped? I'm sure it does, but I will give you an update on that. I know it has the updated nine-one-one text capability, like if an individual is in distress or under arrest or where they can't speak, or not in a position to call, you can do a nine-one-one text and actually do two-way.
Super.
That capability is, and it works. Next slide, please. You know, we, we, this is not new tonight, but we've introduced these cadence, these are specialized cadence that have already worked. Tainus, immediately upon putting him to service, the very, the very next night he went to service, found us stolen guns off the street, got them off the street, and fentanyl, and that's what their specialty is, is fentanyl opiates. We're proud to, we're proud to have this force multiplier in our, our office. It's a benefit to this whole county. So twenty, and if you look in the reading, this strategic move funded through the Equitable Sharing Initiative, and that, you know, we did not come to the board for budget, and we, we was able to use what passed drug purchases and dealer, officers, all that labor, we're able to put it back and reinvest back in the community. And I'm looking at putting one more in in twenty twenty-five. Any question? Next slide. We partner with the community in action, which is known to many of you, and we do attend all the churches and the departments organization, and that, that was our twenty twenty-four model, using the town hall. This is where I go out, and our command staff goes out, and this is like our twenty twenty-three town hall. So we are at these community interactions. If you got concerns or questions, I ask you to come out. This is for all of Beaufort County, and we can answer your concerns right there on spot. All right, our future projects for twenty twenty-four, next slide. This will be introduced after we get electronics installed. Again, this is financed through a grant that we requested through Senator Perry, and it came through, and we were, we're proud to have this going into, going into action in probably the next thirty days, is what my, my plan is. Any questions about the? You see what our intent is, is implement the sheriff's, sheriff's response team to respond to emergency calls, promote safety and awareness to the thousand old boaters that utilize Beaufort County's waterways. You know, we invite fishing tournaments, we invite outside the county people to come in, and plus, we already have mutual aid with Pitt and Pemlico and Hyde County, so it's a, it's a benefit for all of us.
What about wildlife resource officers?
They, they have their own mission and their own task.
I mean, if there's an accident on the water. If there's an accident on the water, who got precedent?
In that wildlife. The drive for this was to no longer allow Beaufort County waterways to be a sanctuary for criminal activity, casing someone's house out. We knew there was pilfering and theft, larceny down at the club, in that whole area, and this, when I talked to Senator Perry about it, and about the neutral aid, he pushed, he pushed it through with that. And Senator Brinson will be part of the, when, when it's deployed. And we welcome you guys, you Commissioners, to join us on the day of Christmas, and then we'll be there. We ain't put it in the water yet. All right, next slide, please. So in twenty twenty-three, these are just additional stats that go through, you can glance through that, if you got any questions.
It seems like a significant increase this year over that year, since we're not through the year yet.
That's correct. Drug trafficking has increased our calls and the, and the overdoses of, or the call to have increased our deputies' call. Next slide. In twenty-three, just as reaching back to twenty twenty-three, accomplishing the town halls, the, I'm sorry, Aurora, I was hoping they'd be here to support, but they're very pleased with, with the work that Sheriff's Office is doing down in Aurora, and Belhaven as well as Eagle, and we're proud of what we're, what the team is doing. Beaufort County Sheriff's Office really is, when I go out into the county, I'm hearing that their job, their job is being done in this profession. The response time is, is very good. How do you put a measurement on, is wherever your people are at, and how fast they, they get there. All right, next slide. So this is just demonstrating that if you, Ms. Share, she does all her IT work, if you see any expenses that may have, got a question for efficiency and officer's safety, you can envision this room just being flip-flopped like, like that. We had all the monitors and everything in the first room, going into the control panel, in the control room, and there was no visual capabilities for in-processing, and on those on the phone, those going into the conference area, so I flipped them, and this is the picture of what you'll see. Again, you're welcome and invited to come down, and, and look, I would say, right now, there is five COVID cases in there, not trying, not trying to distract you from going down there, but. All right, next slide. So we launched the Ace of Hearts, and I think this is a good time to remind you, the Ace of Hearts is, we go out and do our training on awareness of cruelty against animals, children, and elderly. Just today, the National Sheriff's Association sent out a, they, they got a house, a house bill trying to go through on cockfighting and dog, dog abuse coming across, and what they, what they linked it to is at the southern border, that the cockfighting's coming across, and it's creating more crime in the United States than just illegals. It's bringing in the dirty money, it's bringing in the dirty guns, and I will be following up on some training soon. I'm still waiting for information to come. So just to, but this, this has been an excellent, Ace of Hearts, when we talk about animal abuse, we always call it in as a Ace of Hearts violation, and someone could be a misdemeanor by the county, animal control, or it could be as bad as removing twenty animals from a, from a bad situation where they're felony abuse. Do you have a question? It's bad. We, we had a incident where animals were removed. Next slide, please. So in response to some structural fires back when I first taken off, we now we have that direct communication and with the fire marshal and fire chief investigator does, so we can go ahead and get on the front side of the investigation. Some of this here, if you got any questions, just continue. Some of this here, if you got any questions, just continue to read through it. You see where we got the Viper radios in the schools, every school, and they're still in there even with the SROs in there with their equipped radio. The principals still have access to that Viper radio, and it's to be seen whether 2025 is gonna close that radio down, the capabilities of it. The 1090, we're still reinforcing the 1090 through our cholden deputies, even to our private schools as we speak. We're still serving and protecting all schools. Next slide. Just wanted to show why, any questions about the 2023 change? When we did this change of color scheme, and it was a, one, it was to me a need, a necessary need to make the Sheriff's Office appear as, as overt as being an obvious enforcement in the communities. And by adding the rotation light, the, the high visibility light on top, gave the officer safety. If you ever seen these on the roadside, you see them for, for long distance, which gives the best advantage to the move over law, to the, to the deputy and the officer. Any questions about this? All right, next slide, please. And again, it reads about the coordination with Senator Perry and Kidwell, and seem to be Senator Brinson that launch up. The integration of Bothford County Emergency Management, EMS to communications 911 CAD, mapping software to enhance emergency response, all for responders. There's probably no one can explain that bullet better than Chris Newkirk. He could probably explain to you the benefit, but just in the real quick explanation, the Washington Fire Departments are able to respond to calls near immediately versus what was once, when they didn't have the capability of seeing the, the call. Now they have at least a warning of the call because now they have a monitor in their, in their bay that allows a visual of the call that's about to come out over the beeper. If you'd like to give any further on that, but we, we take the pride in knowing that as a leader of emergency management, Chris has really pushed, he and I, but he's pushed me to the capabilities that 911 Center does have. He, he's pulling them out, and we're making Bothford County safer because we're able to respond quicker. So I, I give Chris a thank you for that. So if Community Watch, we got a liaison specifically for that program, and that's a pretty extensive program. It's been going on many years. It's a federal recognized program. If your community is not, if any one in our viewing is not part of the Community Watch program, it is trained by our lieutenant, who is in charge of that program, will come to your neighborhood and, and can give the national level type training for what does a bad guy look like versus someone maybe just walking through your community without prejudgments and taking actions in your own hand. I'd much rather you take a, take a look at the person, get a description from head to toe, call 946-0101. I'd much rather you do that and submit a tip than get involved with some event or someone you don't know. All right, next. Now this demonstrates the public safety app that the Sheriff's Office funded for the benefit of Bothford County citizens. It is the, is a very high-quality professional platform, and it has the ability to bring in our websites and the county's websites, and what it does, it goes out and fetches those websites, and that's showing on the page too. Our conversations with emergency management with the community college is to put them on as a partner in it. It is a public safety app, so if y'all got any suggestions, I know Commissioner Redd Holtz at one point had some questions. Can you think of that tonight, sir?
No. Well, the only thing has been is we're struggling to find a way to communicate with the residents of Bothford County. We've got a newspaper that doesn't reach you, and, and so we're, we're just trying to-
Well, the significance of this particular platform that we have, it has a, if, if you recall the incident at the food line on the east side of town with the, the guy who was on meth, he passed out, and we found the three-year-olds in his automobile, and then we had DOD from Cherry Point to come. If you had had the app downloaded on that day or that evening, it would have advised you that this was a zone to stay clear of, maybe detour around. That DOD would be working in this area, and it's blocked off. So to me, being able to divert mass traffic from coming in is a lot easier and safer than me putting additional deputies having to call them in to do detours, whereas that's what we had to do, the fire departments and all the mutual aid. But this app is really just, is, is what it is. It's an excellent tool for communicating with Bothford County, and it's being used. We got right at just shy of 4,000 downloads, who use it? And that was, I didn't, that may have been two weeks ago that I even inquired on. All right, next slide, please. So utilizing the, the front office and the director over administrative, we were able to realign the civilian help upfront, and because we had a deputy managing all evidence to study, it's a lot of work, but we were able to streamline the civilian's job. We just moved her over and taken on a whole new responsibility. I interviewed, they put in their, their interest. I interviewed, and one was selected, and now I was able to move that sworn deputy away from a clerical work to, to the work he should have been all along. So that's investigating. Investigating. All right, the next bullet says establish the sheriff's response team. That, that is a 10-member team that will respond to any of Bothford County's, where it's barricaded or a high risk of warrants. We got, we got that and the training behind it. So some of the training you may have heard in the chatter, not to bring up any, but if you heard any training that the Sheriff's Office had been doing, is structured training coming straight through the community college and no other training. We don't do training outside of the community college other than our own internal trainers. And if anything ever changes, let me know. I'll let you know. Next slide, please. And this is the vehicle engaged in that. This was repurposed. Washington Daily News recognized the substation in Aurora. Thank you all. Proud to know that we, we have been consistently operating as promised, as we stated, and will continue to do that. Next slide. Just a snapshot of fentanyl powder, fentanyl pills. The top two fentanyl powder and pills is a equal to 95,000 potential overdose is what equate, what that number equates to. 95,000 overdoses. Two milligrams is a CDC says is a potential overdose, and those numbers translate to 95,000. So if you take that into overdose death, if no one was there at the moment of the, of the overdose, then theoretically, I guess you, they have, they have the grace of God and whomever's there would be Narcan. Since I've taken office, well, there's times that changed, and most worse, I was able to survey that, and we got the grant through after I applied for the grant to get every deputy a two-dose fentanyl. So, two, two doses, two doses Narcan. Good catch. Two doses. But we have seen, just for your knowledge there, we have seen as many as six Narcan doses required on a overdose. Where you think that happened at? Right in the courthouse, hearing court session. It came in as an observer, and it took six of them to bring them back. So when you hear these medical first responders pleading to you for, those overdoses are real, and, and that, that potential cross-contaminating is real, as we know, if you, many of you may have heard that the trooper who was positive diagnosed, took a positive cross-contamination, and he had to be Narcan-ed back while on the side of the road. And what that makes is a bad, a potential bad deal for him because he's, he's there with his, all of his equipment exposed. Any questions here?
Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Uh, since you've been sheriff, have you seen a rise in fentanyl poisoning in our community, leading to more deaths, more near deaths?
Yeah, I think that's the answer. The poison fentanyl has risen. Yes, sir.
And this is just from you interdicting, discovering it, getting it off the street.
You know what? So I came in with my, my, my questions, my, I was searching for answers. So I changed, what I did change is our reporting and our, changed the way we look at enforcement. We do it in a combination of cadence and CI's and patrol, patrol unit, and those collectively is what these results have come from. I believe maybe the patrol, for instance, maybe wasn't being, the numbers weren't being tabulated and accounted into a statistic, something to show you. I think maybe that would be a fair way of explaining that. Also, I believe us identifying how many lives are saved resident next to the drug, to our narcotics team, because one, we've got a, we've got about a 95% turn, what we did is turnover due to age and retirement. I was able to get a different look at how the, how drug enforcement has affected, affected us here in Bothford County. We don't have the same problems that Craven County's got. We're not on that main corridor or Pitt County. You know, the larger counties with, what we got is a, we got a problem of economic distress, and, and it's tough for these, I don't know why they're slipping into this attic. They like calling themselves addicts. So I just don't have an answer for that. I do have the answer that we are in the, for instance, in the jail, offering ragape. Ragape, I'm telling you, they are, I won't say they're perfect, but I'm telling you about 99% on the money with their treatments, how their, the health department's helping us with the MAP, Medicaid assistance treatments. All of this is just answering your question, do I think it's increased? Yes. I think it's just the times we're in as well. I got a theory on all that, but that's, we're just in difficult times. And what makes people go, if they're already on the fence, what makes them fall over on the other side? Some folks need just the wind movements, some needs to be pushed over, you know, I just don't. They didn't give you an answer, but yeah, I do think it's-
Do you think it could be that there's just so much product on the streets brought into our communities from far, far away?
Yes, I do. You, you, I know you're fishing, but yeah, of course. I mean, I've been through enough training and enough conferences and enough, I've sat through the last sheriff's conference, the National Sheriff's Association president, he was our guest speaker, and, and the room was filled with nothing but invited 100 sheriffs, not anyone else. Maybe the chief did. But that, that video of awareness that he brought that showed the true south of the border, coming across the border crime, was devastating to, to even an assistant attorney general sitting in the same room, because it is that, it is that prevalent out there. And those precursor drugs, the chemicals that are, that are in Mexico to come to make that product, we gotta, we gotta put a stop somehow to it.
So what about China?
The briefing did say that shiploads of chemicals came into Mexico, and there difference of the, the rest of the ingredients for making the fentanyl product would be started in China up to Mexico, getting it more, and coming in peel forms, powder form, liquid form, in some cases where they can change the molecular. That's the chemist in. That next slide just demonstrates a, a snapshot of what the reality in law enforcement in our office looks like. And if there's no other questions? Yes, sir.
We, we don't have the presentation, is that?
Okay. We can get that.
Okay. If you get it to Katie, she'll shoot it out to the commissioners.
Okay. I apologize though.
Okay.
Can, can you give us a snapshot of, of the open positions?
Let's see if that, um-
It gives you resignations, but it doesn't tell you, doesn't give us an idea what are open now.
Yes, I got, um, let me get that for you. I don't, I don't see it up either. I, I know I've got seven opens in Sheriff's Office. There are three, you've got sheriffs and jail and, I don't know.
We, we just had an update, what, is it a week ago by email, that Commissioner Richardson asked for?
That's right, and we did.
So we got that.
If you don't mind, until I get you something, but no resignation since that request was up.
Okay.
Does anyone have a question before we?
I have a question.
Yes.
You, you were in the room, I believe, when I asked Superintendent, you do have the authority on school property, anywhere on school property, to bring criminal charges-
on school property, anywhere on school property, to bring criminal charges if you observe a criminal act?
That's correct.
Or you can prove a criminal act. Do, do you feel handicapped in any way by the school system with this?
So I made a call to the chief of Washington PD and what we've come an arrangement. That during school hours, business hours, we will handle all criminal investigations, arrests, charges. And after hours, it becomes public, it becomes county property and within their jurisdiction, they'll come and do any charges or investigations after hours.
The city.
The city. So that's an agreement. Do I feel hands tied? No, sure, I don't think we've, they, they, everything's been going really smooth since we've been in there.
Thank you. Any, anyone else have a question? Are you gonna lead that on scout or are you gonna introduce?
No, this is Captain Miller, is our support services captain. We welcomed him in about three weeks ago. He came in on the last pay period and proud to have his expertise in, very meticulous with his just in general. So I'm proud to have him on board to do what he's about to introduce to you in his OCD. With his stuff on me, but he keeps me straight. But, uh, he's gonna present to you. If you've got any questions, I'll be right back. Captain Miller?
Good evening. So we're, uh, so we're here to present a proposal, six vehicles for the current budget year. Um, I have, you should have a spreadsheet and it'll outline on the, the vehicles on the left, what we're proposing for those six. The six vehicles, if you looked under the dealership cost, that is our cost of them. The procurement, it was, is, that's just a comparison to what the procurement price is, if they're available, which most of them are not. Um, at this point, the, the Sheriff's Association procurement, their, their program runs similar to, like the federal fiscal year, October 1st. So they're at the end of their fiscal year, so a lot of these vehicles are not available. So we were able to go through dealerships, some of them the same dealership as the procurement. Some of them we were able to get local dealerships and the dealerships that, and they were able to actually be better on pricing for those vehicles. So that's your, that's the under procurement is what the prices were there. The, and some of those procurement prices are lesser vehicle, but it's what they have on there. So they might have a, like a two-wheel drive versus where we were able to get a four-wheel drive for our needs. So that's where that, that pricing you'll see there. And then your purchases here was, was a comparison price of vehicles we purchased in the last few years. There's only two that, was it Durango purchased last year? Um, that was the price there. And then the, the last Tahoe we purchased was a, back in the 2019, 2020 budget season. Total for the, our cost was, right now, it'd be 292,588 dollars and four cents, which is, uh, compared to our budget at this time, is 400,000.
How many, how many more vehicles are in the budget? I, I did not go back and look at that. Do you still, based on that, it appears you still have a couple more?
That's 400. He was looking at me. And you could answer the same.
Okay.
No, with 400, we have, we purchased one already. We purchased a Malibu that's already purchased and so we're, these six we're for approval because of their price of 30. So that's the six, so that's seven. And then we, you know, still have available funds, purchase one or two more.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners? All right. Entertained a motion to approve the six vehicles being purchased and within the budget?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, and a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I couldn't see them all. Anybody opposed? Okay. unanimous. Thank you.
You can.
Yeah.
Thank y'all. Y'all have supported the sheriff's office and I think the people see it, they know it and we're, and look, this team has really done a super job. The sheriff's, I provide the vision and the leadership and this office has really done a super job. When I say that, I give the appreciation to Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. I'm grateful to be the sheriff here. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And to answer your question about the video, we do not have the video capability on.
Oh, okay. That's new, I think.
They responded back through text.
But, but the, we are able to take a text message if somebody's in distress?
Absolutely. You can do that, sitting right there and encourage everyone to be prepared to do that as you see something that our backs too don't see, that you get in and, and make that call because they're gonna, they're gonna send it.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
We're going to items for decision, the health department and, uh, Janelle?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am up here, item for decision in regards to a truck that was put in the budget for this year. This truck would go for environmental health to replace one of our onsite wastewater trucks. The current onsite wastewater truck would replace one of our very old mosquito trucks that has over 200,000 miles on it. Actually, over 240,000 miles, excuse me. Uh, as you see in front of you, Lee Chevrolet was lower at 48.2 versus Capital Chevrolet and so we'd like to move forward with the Lee Chevrolet.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. I'll second that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to items for decision, Public Works, Christina. Ah, I'm gonna have to rob the bank at these times.
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
So you have this agenda item that, as you'll see from the description, in August, in late August, it had a culvert crossing rupture at, at Spring Creek Road, East Aurora. The staff went in, put, cut off house so they could isolate it, but they did have some, some folks impacted. Um, it is under, the four foot, the four inch main is under an eight-foot culvert, so they had to get a dr, they needed a contractor to do a required directional drill about 300 linear feet and put an additional 40 linear feet of pipe and fittings to make the repair. You have two quotes, Hendrix Barn Hill at 49, 380, Herring and Riven Bar at 49, 225. Staff is requesting that you approve the purchase order, but reallocate 51, 925 from the contingency line item to be able to cover it.
You got it. That's interesting, guys. I apologize, I was outside waiting, I didn't realize the sheriff's office.
Well, we're open for questions now that she's here.
So part of it is contingency?
All of it is contingency, yes, sir. There was enough contingency in the fiscal year, 25 line item to cover all of the costs. And information that I'm not sure is included, the area we're talking about is on Spring Creek Road between Willis Road and Middle Road. Anyone familiar with that area?
John?
Just, just a question on what, and I looked at that bid amount and it was, I was struck by the dollar, $103 per foot.
Yes, sir.
PVC.
Mm-hmm.
So I went online to look it up because I was unfamiliar with what the F PVC is, which is, and I found it, it's $4.82.
That's probably glued-on PVC. Did you look at fusible PVC?
Yes, it's fusible PVC.
With the bore machine that requires.
It is DR-18.
It's the bore machine that's.
That's right.
That, that's the charge for the bore?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All of this is the bore because it's going under a 96-inch culvert. 96 inches.
So they didn't break out, obviously they didn't, okay.
Convert that to a, we're going deep, deep and long.
What's amazing to me is how close the two bids are.
I was amazed with that as well. And I've asked our staff that did it and they went out at two separate times to do the, the quote. But again, both of those companies we've used previously, Hendrix Barn Hill is actually completing work along Highway 33 now. Herring and Riven Mark has done workforce in the past when we've had an incident such as this and they are well acquainted with each other and well acquainted with the local suppliers. One is out of Greenville and one is out of Deep Runge, just south of Kinston.
See, that's a good quote.
I, I, I would say, I would say they probably have the same software that does bidding. Where you plug in the numbers and it kind of.
Or definitely the same supplier or the same subcontractor giving them a quote that happens frequently.
Yeah. So, anyway, other questions? Did we get a motion or not? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Need a sec?
A sec.
All right, do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize.
All right. Uh, we're going to emergency service, Chris and DC?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Before you today to, to discuss an initiative that would allow us to elevate some more homes and, and these types of mitigation programs are something that we don't often talk about a lot. So I'd like to take a moment just to provide some quick background so we're not kind of jumping into something and, and with the assumption that everybody listening and, and here understands all the acronyms that we'll be talking about, okay? So in the past, we've been very successful with mitigation programs, particularly elevating houses that are prone to flooding. You guys see that, you talked about it as a board before, we brought this project before you in the past. And normally there are two piggy banks that we use to help fund that. Uh, one is, is your, is your hazard mitigation grant program or FEMA's all about acronyms, right? So HMGP. And normally these, these types of pocketbooks open up whenever we have an event or an incident. So that's why you always see HMPG Matthew, HMGP Florence, right? It's always because of an event or an incident. And the, the great thing about those initiatives is there's normally a lot of money associated with it and it's not as competitive because only people who were impacted by that incident or an event are competing for those funds. The other advantage to that is for most of the homeowners, it's 100% funded because what you have is FEMA that puts 75% to it. And because it was an event or, or incident, the state is contributing to matching 25%. So for the homeowner, it's 100% funded. Some success that we've had in the past with that program is for storms currently underway for Beaufort County is the Florence HMGP. So that is allowing for 30 elevations and 18 property acquisitions that are all for the city of, the, the acquisitions are for city of Washington, the elevations are throughout the county. Uh, also in the pipes, we have two other HMPG programs. One is for Hurricane Isaias, if you remember that a couple of years back, that was the one that kind of surprised us with the storm surge, where we got more than what they were forecasting, we had some, some issues in localized areas. And the other, believe it or not, was COVID. So under COVID, because it was an incident and an event, there were mitigation funds and opportunities that opened up and we were allowed to seek elevation properties under COVID. So right now, we, Beaufort County is a part of three different kind of pocketbooks for HMGP that would allow for elevation. The one that's currently funded is Florence and that's those 30 elevations. All total, between those three programs, we have about 68 homes that are either currently have work started under this piggy bank or, or in the process of being approved and awarded through the federal level. The, the other great thing about this program is, um, we normally get a lot of assistance on the application side of, of HMPG. So whenever we have a hurricane, as you know, one of the activities that's happening in the EOC is bringing in all these resources to help people. And part of those people we bring in help with this application piece. So it's a, for us, it's a great program. Allows no matching funds from the homeowner, we get a lot of help on the application intake, a lot of money, less competition. And they normally move at a little bit faster rate as far as how these awards process go through application and come down to us as an award. Now, in the past, one of the things that's changed recently, because the state of North Carolina has taken on the initiative to, to increase its response to these storms, particularly with mitigation, a couple of years ago, they developed a program called Centric. It's one we talked about in front of the commissioners. And what that allowed was, that was the state's way of streamlining, streamlining mitigation activities, where the state managed all the construction and did stuff. And all we had to do was provide the local representative. For us, we contract with Mideast for that local representative. So the way that works for these projects to include Florence, these 30 homes that we currently have funding for, the state is managing all the contract management bids and Mideast through a contract with us is managing the admin piece. And all of that is grant funding. These grants allow for administrative support, construction management. So HMPG's been very successful for us in the past. The other pocketbook that we get into is FMA or flood mitigation, flood mitigation assistance. This is an annual program, so it's not attached to an incident or an event. And it's a program that's managed by the National Flood Insurance Program. So we're dealing with FEMA in one piggy bank and NFIP in the other. And because of that, this annual process, there's normally less money available for projects, it's normally more competitive because you're competing with everybody across the nation, not just those that are impacted by a storm. And in the past, we have contracted with Mideast to, to, to complete those applications for us. So imagine that the grant window opens up and, and in Beaufort County, according to Mideast, we have about 200 properties that have severe repetitive loss due to flooding. We have another 600 that has repetitive loss. So we have a lot of homes in Beaufort County who are vulnerable to flooding events. So in FMA, under this annual application window, um, one of the things through our contract with Mideast in the past has been their outreach, contacting these homeowners. Hey, we have this grant opportunity coming up, would you like to participate? Yes or no? And they collect all that information and file the application on our behalf. The other thing with FMA is there's a matching component to the homeowner, it's not 100% funded. And sometimes that matching component can change. It can be 20% some years, 10% others. The methodology behind that, I do not know. I just know it changes from year to year. So what we learned in recent phone calls, going back to about a month ago, is the state really wants to enhance its ability to create and apply for more FMA projects. They want to increase the applications for FMA's. And in doing so, they provided funding to each of the Eastern North Carolina COGS for a full-time position for two years for the purpose of increasing applications. So where we were faced in that is we do a service contract like we have traditionally done, that's going to duplicate the efforts of a state-funded position, right? So now our COGS have that state funding support from the state to develop these applications. So where does that bring us to? In conversations with Mideast and our state partners over the last month, anytime you're looking at mitigation efforts like this, elevating homes in these grant, these grant processes, nothing moves fast, right? These approval processes are not fast, the construction's not fast. So we have to look at, at mitigation efforts like this as a marathon and not a sprint. And here's what we're faced with in the coming, in the coming few years. We have 68 homes currently in the works on HMPG. We have 63 currently in the works on FMA. And up until this point, we've been relying solely on Mideast to execute all these projects. And in the mitigation efforts of Mideast, they're an office of two people. So the challenge that Mideast has, and we've had this conversation as well, and they're, they're working on some efforts to increase staffing internally to help meet, to meet that demand. You have a multitude of projects that could potentially be awarded and the management of that construction over the next, next few years, on top of an increased expectation from the state to turn. expectation from the state to turn away applications. So that triggered us to start looking at what other resources are out there that can help us be successful in implementing these projects. So that's where we started looking at other firms like Mideast. And our evaluation of that, one came to the surface pretty clearly, and that's a company called Insight. They were highly recommended to us from Craven County. They have a lot of the management, particularly the construction management staff in-house, so engineers, inspectors, all of those things are in-house. They don't have to contract those items out. So that brings us to this FMA opportunity. What we have before you tonight is the notification of award or grant agreement from North Carolina EM for eight property elevations that date back to an application period of 2020, right? Again, that marathon versus a sprint. These are slow balls to get rolling. In looking at that, one, we're asking your permission to accept that grant and move forward with those elevations, elevate these eight properties that all have severe repetitive loss. They've been competed through that national award, so they rose to that level of critique from FEMA, the National Flood Program. And we would like to utilize Insight to manage that construction forward. The cost to that construction management is all covered by the grant, so no money out of our pocket. We're not paying for that. These grant programs, again, allow for construction and admin costs. So those are the two actions that we have before you tonight. Asking your permission to trigger both of those contracts we have been included. We'll be happy to take any questions you guys have.
Questions? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the grant agreement, as well as the project ordinance totaling $1,423,898 by using the Insight to manage. I'll make that motion.
I'll stay there.
Any...
Is Mideast in agreement that they can't handle this?
Mideast recognizes that they have some growing challenges to overcome, particularly with Centric. Centric's a remodel. And those 30 homes that are currently underway, even with the state system, have some growing challenges. In meetings with Mideast, they have been upfront in telling us they recognize the need for additional staff on their board.
Okay. But I don't think you answered my question.
So I'll answer your question. So it's our responsibility to ensure that these projects get managed, get managed quickly and effectively. In our conversation with Mideast, we do not believe they have the capacity to do this, based on the fact that they have 32 homes already going right now, plus an essential single-family rehabilitation loan program going on for the county with two people. So we've had that conversation with them. We've evaluated. We believe that this is the way to get this project done and underway. It's not saying we won't use Mideast with additional projects down the line, but we can't dump another eight on top of them. I think they recognize that. They may not want to say it out loud, but it's our responsibility to make sure that this project gets done. And it's our recommendation to you that you use an additional company. They've got planned work right now, Mideast does.
That's a question.
Yes.
Why did, I mean, why all of a sudden did Craven County recommend these folks to you?
It wasn't all of a sudden. So if you recall from a couple of months back, we had on the agenda to talk about the continued support of various mitigation projects. And part of that process was putting out a request for qualifications to find out who's available in the area that can provide those services. So that, our venture down this road is because our current contracts with Mideast had expired, and we were trying to look at what we want to do in the future. And that started us on all the options that we're discussing today.
Is this time sensitive?
For this FMA grant, yes. We have, right now, there's a performance, period of performance set for this grant for September of '26.
Because I haven't heard that there was a problem over there. And I serve on that board.
Well, there's, so communications between the various board members at Mideast, I can't speak to. I know many of you on this board receive...
Well, I'm telling you, you might not can speak to, but I'm telling you, I have not had any conversation with them about they having problems. Now, what the other board members said, I don't know, but I'm telling you, I haven't had. Now, that is the truth.
And again, I can't speak to the internal communications from Mideast. What I can say is for the last 45 days, we've had multiple meetings and conversations with Mideast about our mitigation projects, trying to get information and trying to look at what are the solutions moving forward. And that has not reached a point that we are satisfied. So the ultimate decision is yours as an elected board. Our job is to give the recommendation.
It is difficult to leave people that we've done business with for some time, plus this particular company is the outgrowth of a company at one time that did not have a very good reputation.
That's correct. In full disclosure, some of the staff members that currently work with Insight were previous employees of Holland. Insight purchased Holland four, five years ago, about four or five years ago. And his sense, they're on their business.
And that's why we had a conversation with Craven County, because they use them for their management of their projects. So we wanted to ensure that that was, that they were solid.
My question is because you really didn't answer Commissioner Booth's question, as far as being time sensitive. And when we say time sensitive, it's the next 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. We didn't get a definitive answer on that. So that's what I want to know.
So the FMA, the current funding, the grant agreement that we have for these eight homes that are listed, has a performance period set to expire in September '26?
September '26, not September of '26.
Not of, September of 2026, so a year and a half from now. Now, the reason why that time is sensitive is because you're talking about bidding and completing construction on eight homes. And is it time sensitive to the point that you may want to have conversations? I can't say that it's that sensitive.
See, that is what I'm asking. I'll be perfectly honest with you. I will just ask them point blank, can you or can you not fulfill these duties? I mean, that's what I want to do. I mean, I don't want to vote tonight and then find out that they were perfectly capable of doing that, and that they might have had in fact had a plan to put in what they need. So I want the opportunity to ask them face-to-face, can you or can you not fulfill the requirements of these eight homes? That's why I'm asking what I'm asking.
I understand that desire. I can tell you, in us asking those questions, we have not gotten a satisfactory answer. So I certainly hope that goes better for you all.
Okay. Well, this item's been on the agenda now for three months. So if you want to put it off another month and have a vote next month, I don't have a problem with that. I haven't had any indications from Mideast about their inability to perform. I've been involved in one of the situations, I guess it's been over the last 30 to 60 days, of one that, a lot of problems, that the homeowner was pointing at, and it gets back to managing the process. And it was, just appeared to be a lot of things that were being left undone. I'm not here to say whose fault that is, because I know there's always a lot of people involved in this. But I get the feel that, you know, with the number of units that they've got right now, they can't take on anymore. I mean, I've been in the business of consulting, and when I get a certain number of clients, I can't take on eight more people.
With just me?
And that is our impression as well. And again, this is not, we're not doing anything behind the scenes with Mideast. Mideast knows full well what our intentions were tonight, and we've communicated that over several meetings.
And this is not to take them out of the equation?
And you're absolutely right. This is not to take them out of the equation. But what we do fully recognize, and they do as well according to their responses to us in our various meetings, the current project with HMPG, the 30 homes that they are managing on our behalf, there are growing pains associated with that program, that they themselves have realized that they've got to make adjustments to keep pace with that. And some of that includes, at least in our conversations from them, hiring additional staff to help ensure quality control and proper construction of the homes that are going in the air. The timelines on when they plan to do that, how they go, the details associated with bringing that staff on, that has not been shared to us. All we got was them recognizing we've got to increase our staff.
Yes. Is Insight going to have an office here in Beaufort County?
No.
Thank you.
Let me just say this. This is what I'm going to do, because I believe in just shooting straight. I'm going to straight up ask the question, and the answer will either be yes or no. And based upon that, next month, I'll be ready to vote. I mean, that's what I'm going to do. And I think that's fair. Do you believe that?
That's certainly your priority, Mr. Commissioner. We made our recommendation based on our observations and our concerns, and being able to spread the load across the deeper bench, because we do believe that moving further down the line, there are going to be a lot more projects. And we want to make sure that we have the capacity to handle those. Because ultimately, you guys are the ones who are going to get complaints. You're going to get the complaints if it's not done quickly and appropriately. And we just want to make sure that that's done. Again, we're not trying to cut them out. We've been straight up with them and saying, you know, this is our reasoning behind that, because we feel like they're overloaded at this time. But we're certainly, I mean, it's ultimately the board's decision.
Well, Mr. Manager, I've been here when Holland was doing it, and since Mideast's been doing it, I have never had a complaint. Not seen it, and isn't some out there now. But I have never had a complaint.
Yeah, I would agree with you that the volume of work, we've not seen this volume of work until now, and we anticipate it getting larger. So we want to make sure that there's capacity to be able to handle that. And so, yes, we've been successful with them. And it gives us the opportunity, if this were to, if this small project, which is only eight homes, which is no cost to the county at all, if it is managed by a different agency, it gives us also the opportunity to evaluate both agencies, to see who does a better job. So...
Let me ask you this, Ed. Since you're on the board, has there been any discussion to add to the number that they have?
Nope.
So I'm assuming that's going to be, that would have to come later?
Well, I'm going to go with Jerry. If I can hear you there in the morning, I'm going to call him and ask.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going to pick up the phone, do just like Jerry, and say, look, can y'all do the job? Can you or can't you? And most, I mean, I haven't heard one thing about this project.
And in your conversations, if there's any information that you need from us?
You gave me all you need, all I need from you. I just want to know that they cannot do the job. That's all. If they say, well, we are bogged down, and I don't know Yemen and Hawaii, I want to know upfront. And that's the way I feel.
And I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, because the way that I'm going to ask mine is this, do you have intentions of hiring new people to lighten the load? That is going to be the question that I'm going to ask.
I don't think it's lighten the load. I think it's to handle the increase, Jerry, because that's...
No, no, Frankie, no, no, no. The question I'm asking them is, are they going to hire enough people to lighten the load, to spread it out, so that all the work is done? That's what I'm saying.
On a timely basis?
Right.
Okay. All right. I will pull my motion. If Randy will pull his?
I will. For you two, I think we need to do what you want to do and give us a shot. So I'll pull mine.
Do that, but gentlemen, at the next meeting, we're going to take some action one way or the other, if we can get a vote, I mean, a motion in a second. So another 30 days, and it's back on the agenda.
Sounds good. We can help with anything last night.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're down to the economic development. Susan, you want to step forward? The first one is a public hearing on the North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Grant. I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, Susan?
I am here regarding a North Carolina Department of Commerce building reuse grant for Project Event. It's been the chair and chairman Waters. Project Event, a company located in Washington, has purchased a new building to house their business. The company has committed to invest $600,000 in real estate and business personal property, and to create five new jobs over an 18-month period. Our office pursued a building reuse grant from the Department of Commerce. On August 5th, at the regularly scheduled commissioners' meeting, a closed session was held for economic development, where department staff briefed the commissioners on the confidential project and explained the grant requirement to provide a 5% local matching funds in the form of in-kind grant administration services by economic development staff. In order to consider the grant, the Department of Commerce requires a local government resolution in support of the funding request on behalf of the company. Public notice for this request was published in the August 28th edition of the Washington Daily News. Beaufort County Economic Development recommends approval of the attached resolution in support of Project Event's application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program.
Okay. Any questions of Susan? We did not have anyone sign up for the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing, hearing no one, entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing?
Second.
And all those in favor coming out of the public hearing, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, I will entertain a motion to approve forward the resolution in support of Project Event's application to NC Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program. Got a motion? There's a second.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any questions of Susan? Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to go to the next one, the North Carolina Railroad Build Ready Site Update?
Yes. As you may recall, Beaufort County was awarded a North Carolina Build Ready Sites Grant in March of 2023 in the amount of $420,000. This governing body approved $280,000 in matching funds with an ordinance to establish a grant project fund, so named North Carolina Site Prep Grant, at the commissioners' regularly scheduled meeting on November 6, 2023. The Build Ready Site Grant Agreement was signed on December 3 of 2023. Progress on the project then stalled. Recently, I was able to connect with the new economic development director at North Carolina Railroad, Patrick Pierce, and together, we updated the grant agreement with new signatures last week. North Carolina Railroad is now running through their internal checklist, and will contact our office when ready to disperse the grant funds. And once the funds are in place, we will then move forward with our existing plans to develop the pad site at the Chaco Innity Industrial Park.
So this was the grant to develop the pad in advance of knowing who or what wanted to build on it?
That is correct.
You know, really, we would be better off to go back to the railroad and say, look, guys, we don't know what we want to use the site for. Why don't you just give us credit for this money when we actually need it, when we get a client landed? Because going out and building a pad, I can tell you, for a building that you don't know will be built, and you don't know what will be built, and you don't know what the site conditions are for the floor weight for that building, this is an exercise in nothing. I'd rather have a credit from North Carolina Railroad of something that we can use down the road when we actually land a client, so we can apply the money directly to the client and use the money where it's needed. I don't remember all of the benefits that we talked about at the time of go ahead and pursuing the grant, so that it was more ready for potential industry.
Yes. The pad site will be on a Class 1 Norfolk Southern Rail Line, and I believe it will help market the property more effectively. It is... It is a rail property and rail properties are fewer and harder to come by and companies, time is money and having that rail spur there will only attract, in my opinion.
Wait a minute. We're talking about two different things. Are you going to build a rail spur or are you going to build a pad site? A pad site is different from a rail spur. Okay? A rail spur is actually going to the railroad, putting frogs in and putting a spur line and building a railroad track off of that main line or whatever is there to service the site. And when you do that, unless you know how you want to service the building that's going to be there and connect to it, you're shooting in the dark. And to build a pad on a, if we build it, they will come basis is, you know, this is, we're better off with a credit from the North Carolina Railroad, negotiating a credit for a customer that we can land. Now you've got something that you can say to a customer, we've got a $400,000 grant that will apply to your site if you will take this site and you can use it in a way that will actually help you instead of going out here and leveling off some ground and saying, we've got a building site. It's the use of the money, having the credit is what's valuable to dangle in front of a customer. Not building a spur and you don't know how you want to connect, I've used railroad spurs, I've run cars on railroad spurs, I've braked cars on railroad spurs, I know about railroad spurs, I've maintained railroad spurs. So, and building a site based on if you build it, they will come, is shooting in the dark. Having the credit to dangle in front of the customer is what's valuable.
Did we ever complete the updated information for wetlands on the site?
The wetland delineation study is now under advisement by Army Corps of Engineers and they're working on their jurisdictional determination.
Okay, we hired consultants to do that?
Yes.
Okay. This is about the fifth time we've done this. Does it have to be updated every...
Well, the 404 wetlands jurisdictional determination by the Corps of Engineers is only good for five years. And after five years, you have to, if you're going to use them, reevaluate them. The maps that we have from the prior studies that we have of 404 wetlands are very, very adequate for any customer that's looking at us because what you have to do if you want to use some of those wetlands is you have to submit a specific plan and an application to use the wetlands. The important thing is knowing where the wetlands are and we already know that. So having a thing updated jurisdictional wise is another waste of time and money.
The jurisdictional wetland determination by Army Corps of Engineers has never been completed.
Yes, but we hired consultants to actually flag out the wetlands. I flagged personally 5,000 acres of wetlands, so I know how it works.
If I may say so, site selection consultants recommend an annual due diligence update with the industry standard being between 18 to 24 months. The Chaco Winnity site was last completed in 2014.
I'm sorry, I hate to be this way, but it's just a way for a consultant to collect some more money from you. That's all it is.
Well, in order for us, Commissioner, I understand that, but in order for us to be competitive against other sites, our due diligence is 10 years old, whereas other sites, they're up to date.
Well, again, knowledgeable people who do development on sites know how to use this information. Unknowledgeable people don't and they're running out paying a consultant every other day. So, you know, we need to consider what we're doing on this site and how to make the site valuable and having a credit from the North Carolina Railroad of like $400,000 or whatever this is, to dangle in front of a client to help him get a spur and for site development is a whole lot more valuable than going out there and flattening out a pad and saying, if you build it, they will come. Because anybody that puts the pad in, then if you're going to build a factory floor, you're going to have to go out and still do borings to determine what's under there and possibly dig up part of it depending on what your needs are and where your foundation is going to land. So, you know, we're playing at developments what we're doing.
North Carolina did offer an option to utilize those funds as an incentive for a company. However, there is a timeframe on that.
Well, that's fine because that pad is a useful site if you build it. So you got a zero. So having the credit to dangle in front of the company is what is valuable, even though there is a time limit. So what if you lose it? Chances are they'll be glad to renew it for you once they've committed to it.
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to that site pad. How long is the credit good for? If you can get a credit? I guess that's my first question. Can you get a credit? And secondly, to what extent, how long is it good for?
I can give you those numbers just momentarily if I look at the agreement. If you give me that.
Well, I was going through some of my old files and I'm the one to put this on the agenda for an update. And I had just pretty well forgot about it, but I hear from time to time that we are just not marketing that industrial site. So my feeling is, is that we need to do whatever we can do to keep it to where it can move a little bit faster and be competitive. And if the requirements are that it's got to be, certain things have got to be done within 18 months, 24 months, 36 months, then I think we need to keep updating it so it's competitive.
So, Mr. Chairman, real quick, and we've had this conversation about economic development and what is, what helps and it's speed to market, obviously. So when we get looked at, there are companies that are looking all over the place right now and what they're trying to do, as you well know, is speed to market. They want to move as quickly as they can and what we've talked about with the board is that means when you have a site and you have all the due diligence done on it, you know exactly where all the jurisdictional wetlands are, you know, you have all the soil borings and you can lay that in front of the company, then they don't have to stop and wait and do that work themselves. So when you're able to do that, you move to the head of the line and you're more apt to, you're more apt to get a site to land. So everybody else is doing that. If we want to be competitive, we need to have, we need to help reduce the time to market for a business who wants to locate out there. It's exactly what you said about adequately marketing it. It's out there for the state to see, but when you look at two properties and one of them says, well, you still got to do this work on it and one of them already has it, they're going to move to the site that already has it.
Well, that kind of stuff's not hard to do. All you need to do is to take the area that the 404 wetlands are and put that on your map and block it off, this area has 404 wetlands. We'll say, any of the rest of this, this is the good land, you can use this. Exactly where a 404 wetland line is, is, you know, we're just, you're just wasting your time over absolutely nothing because anybody that's interested in it is going to look and want to know where the good land is anyway. And that's not hard to show on a map. I mean, I don't, we're, you know, guys, as far as I'm concerned, I'm in the business and any knowledgeable company that looks at this is going to look at it that way. Over here is the block where the 404 wetlands are, we still got another 100 acres over here that we can use. Let's see, let's see how this thing works. We're spinning our wheels and wasting time and wasting money. They've got engineers, they've got development people, they've got geotechnical people, they've got their own consultants, but they're not dependent upon us for anything.
Okay, this was not put on here for any kind of action. It was put on here just to see if anything was going on. So I'm assuming you're going to get some more feedback from them?
Yes, and the timeframe is two years.
Okay. I think that's why, I think you... You should have a conversation with them. We're really more interested in getting this credit and if we are, what's the possibilities of renewing it if we can't use it in the two years? And go from there.
If I remember correctly, if anybody came to us within that two-year period and said, we want to buy and convert this, they agreed that they would let that money go?
Yes, that would be included as an incentive for the company. You are correct.
And that's a good incentive.
All right. Thank you very much, Susan. We're down to the EMS Medicaid Cost Settlement Distribution for fiscal year 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. That's a few years ago, Anita.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have received two checks from the state finally for EMS Medicaid Cost Settlement Distributions. They total $716,673. And if you look on page 243 and page 244, you can see the calculations that I've done to show how those two checks need to be distributed to the various EMS agencies that we have or providers in the county. If you go to page 250, then you can see the budget amendment I have there because the funds were received before the end of the fiscal year, it rolled into fund balance. So we need, we would need to do a budget amendment to appropriate that fund balance so that I can write a check to Chaco Winnity for their amount, which totals $179,202. Aurora is set to get $61,235. Broad Crete will receive $96,022 and Pintown will receive $19,162. Beaufort County's portion would be $300,911. I do want to point out that this is a tentative settlement from the state and that's very important because what that means is they've quickly looked at our report and basically sent us a check for 90% of the amount that we said that would be owed to us. After that, there would be a thorough audit at some point, a desk audit at the state for them to do a deeper dive into both of our reports to see if there were any adjustments that need to be made. So we're in a position where we've received this money from the state, we're sitting on this money, it's a tentative settlement. We've got agencies that could really use this money in the county, they need it and I'm really comfortable in going ahead and distributing it to them even though it's a tentative settlement because if there are some minor adjustments, then I can always recoup that money back from them through their district tax distributions. So I come to you now with a recommendation that we do distribute this money in the amounts that I just stated to these agencies and approve of the...
As I understand it, based on our oversight committee and what you just said, there is a 10% holdback?
There is.
So there is some cushion there and it was pretty well said to our knowledge, nobody has ever gone beyond that 10% on the audit.
I don't know about that. I can tell you my experience has been that our reports have always been very close to what the final distribution has been. There might be some minor adjustments and that's basically why I'm very comfortable in going ahead and distributing based on the tentative amount.
I move we follow your recommendation.
Do, and we have a second? Other questions?
I think we need to put in there that when the check is written, there needs to be a letter that says that if it turns into a negative clawback, negative amount, that we're going to claw the money back. They need to understand that. It needs to be in writing, it needs to be a part of this motion if the motion maker...
I planned to do that anyway, Commissioner. I planned to attach a letter.
I'll add that to them. Okay. Two second there. And you agree to that?
Yes.
All right. Was any...
Just a quick question. How do we calculate the cost per trip? Was that locally here we did that or was that something that came from the state?
It's based on, are you talking about the average cost per trip overall?
Whatever is listed down there.
Like on page 243? Which number are you looking at, Commissioner?
243, in the middle there, it says cost per trip, Beaufort County, $1,171.22.
Okay, so for example, Chaco Winnity's cost per trip is $695.11, so...
Yeah, my question is, where did that number come?
Yeah, I'm about to show you that. So if you turn, let's look at 2021, go to page 244 and for Chaco, because the backups actually included in your packet for that. So Chaco Winnity, the cost per trip average is $595.69. So if you go over to page 246, you'll see Chaco Winnity's individual cost listed there. So if you take the $1,120,488 and divide it by their total trips of 1,881, that's $595.69 per trip.
Okay.
Okay?
But the figure that I've got circled on mine is the $985. Is that, that's the average cost for every...
Every agency together, that's the average cost for all of us combined.
And so that gets to be the number that the state looks at?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're shown as a combined unit.
I got you.
As one.
I got you. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the distributions for the years ending in 2020 and 2021 as well as approving the budget amendment? Raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the Boys and Girls Club and Brian, you're going to address that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plains has historically operated two units in Beaufort County, the Bellhaven unit and the Washington unit. I was at a Partnership for Children meeting last month and was told by the mayor that they were closing down the Bellhaven unit. I reached out to the CEO, Mark Holtzman, for information on that and was told that the unit would close in Bellhaven on October the 4th. Mayor Cradle and his mothers, they put together a program locally to pick that up on October the 7th and continue to serve it. You know that in our 2425 budget, the county appropriated $40,000 to the Boys and Girls Club for those operations. Now, they weren't specified for a particular club, but they were specified that they had to be used in Beaufort County. They couldn't take it out of Beaufort County. There were a couple of comments that were made by commissioners about was this going to change the calculus? So I instructed the finance office not to send that distribution yet to the Boys and Girls Club pending discussion by the board commissioners. So that is for your discussion to tell us how you want to do it, if you want to do anything different. Last night.
All right. One comment, I got a text from the mayor, Bellhaven Ricky, they're having a town meeting tonight. He wanted to be here. They're in the process of trying to pull together a budget as well as update the numbers that are going to be in the after-school program. So I would say that, you know, we just wait until he's able to come here and kind of give us an up-to-date. The only thing, and I'll tell you, one of the comments tonight by one of our people during the public comments, there is a senior program that goes on in Bellhaven. It meets at the old town where the jail used to be and where the railroad event is every year at Christmas time. And then also at the Boys and Girls Club, that's where volleyball and basketball recreational programs go on as well as pickleball for seniors. And pickleball for seniors in Bellhaven is about like having, what's the dance at the college that we've...
Line dance?
Yeah, line dance. That's it. Line dance. It's very important and, you know, I think that we need to maybe have a little better feel for the numbers and the activity. The other thing that I'll tell you is that the town of Bellhaven has been absorbing all of the cost for the building. So Boys and Girls Club, Eastern North Carolina, whatever the correct name is, has not been having to pay an electric bill or anything for use of that building. The building is owned by the town, as far as I know, so by the town of Bellhaven.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Brother had a meeting with the directors Friday and the mayor, Cradle didn't tell the whole story, I don't know how in the world he didn't tell the whole story. When you get down there, the man said the attendance record is about 14. You got to have four people down there and I hope we don't take and use this as a political ball. The funds were made for Beaufort County Boys Club. It didn't have a designation or how much Bellhaven get or anything. Wish they deserved something. Don't get me wrong, it's Beaufort County. But the thing that, the thing that, that you got to realize, when it starts to cost you more for staff and you have kids in there, something got to happen. And I've been by there two or three times and there's no kids there. And I hope that, and I think it's because nobody is recruiting those kids to come there. That's my belief because they need it. Bellhaven actually need that club. Bellhaven actually need that club.
Commissioner, I don't disagree with anything you said. In fact, I think the email that I sent out after this occurred was that they had low attendance and they were trying to find, and there was an opportunity maybe to restart in January if they found additional folks. But there was questions by the board, so we put it on hold until the board made a decision. Ultimately, it's the board's decision. Y'all tell us what you want to do.
The last number that the mayor gave me was that, I think, Ed, they had 30-some that had registered for the after-school program.
Jesus Christ. So, Mr. Chairman, I guess from our side, with the consensus of the board, we'll just wait and hold on this until next meeting. I'm not sure that $40,000 is going to stop the Boys and Girls Club from moving forward in the next 30 days.
Well, the only thing is, is I think it's very unfair the way it was handled and placed on the mayor and the county as it related to, you know, all of a sudden, it's a problem. I mean, it was never any mention during the budget process. So, I think it could have been handled a lot better than it ended up.
I agree. Been handled a lot better, but the seven of us up here, and I bet you they, one of us been in the building. So, I mean, what do you expect when the people don't even know you?
Well, I've been in the building. I think-
Boys and Girls Club?
Yeah.
There's two of us.
I think here, yeah, you're building. You know, you got to sell it. I mean, and I think that's just it. I don't think, I don't think the local people have done their part, Ed. I don't think they've done this.
That was coastal's problem, right?
Well, I think it's a combination. I think-
The staff, the staff goes out.
Meet with schools, meet with the schools and stuff like that. And Frankie is correct. It's because they didn't, I mean, it wasn't marketed properly. And we wasn't, it wasn't held properly. I don't think we should have just walked in and closed it down. I really don't.
That's just from the-
Okay, well, we're going to have it back on the agenda. Next item is NC DOT petition for road addition.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You have a petition by NC DOT in your packet to add two roads to the state secondary, the state maintained secondary road system, .12 miles of beach lane and .12 miles of pine lane, both in the Rosedale subdivision. You have the request from NC DOT and the resolution required, and we'd recommend your approval.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from staff.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Add a second. Any questions? All those in favor of the petition for the road addition by DOT, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three is the NC Resilient Coastal Communities Program Phase Four Grant Award. Brian?
So, yes, sir. Take you back just a little bit. You recall in January of this year, the board unanimously approved submitting a grant to the NC Land and Water Quality Grant application to construct a low-impact demonstration site at the community college. This was all put together through the RCCP program. We went through the initial piece, phase one, phase two, phase three. Phase three was engineering and construction documents. And then phase four is the actual construction. We were not successful originally with going after RCCP grant, phase four funds. So, at a regular meeting, you allowed us to go after the NC Land and Water Fund. Later in May, they reopened phase four for RCCP. We took it to the board, the board said, you know, our recommendation to you was go ahead and submit for both of them. That way you got double shot at getting it. The RCCP phase four came back before the land quality agreement, or land quality decision did. So, we notified land and water fund grant that we would withdraw that one. And we were approved for the phase four RCCP grant in the amount of $194,166. And that is the same match, local match of $16,394 to construct the project that was originally approved by the board. No additional county funds required based on this, and we would recommend your approval.
Okay, we got a motion, second?
Second.
Add a second. Questions? Okay, all those in favor of accepting and doing the local match of $16,394, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, you want to go to the NC DIT Stopgap Solutions?
Yes, sir. So, this is what's called the NC DIT Stopgap Solutions Programs. It's essentially CAB number two, completing access to broadband. There was, as you recall, under CAB, counties had to match using ARPA funds to do CAB. We had funds set aside, because this board set aside $4.5 million for broadband grant matches. Through that, we did the Great Grant One, which was $148,169 in match. We did Great Grant Two, which was a half a million. And then we did CAB One, which was $2.7 million. Based on the amount of money that you set aside in the project originally for ARPA and CARES, out of the 4.5, you've got $1.089708 remaining in that designated broadband matching fund. Under CAB Two, because there were so many, I think there were only 34 counties in North Carolina, 34, 35 counties in North Carolina, under CAB that had actually set aside money for broadband, everybody else spent their money doing something else. When they came back for a second round of CAB, nobody, there wasn't anybody who had any money. So, the state said, we've got to spend our ARPA money, we're sending it back to the federal government. So, they passed legislation that said they would do the match for counties. So, the match is a half a million dollars. So, the state is going to take some of their ARPA money that they got, move it from this pocket to this pocket, and pay for the match for all 100 counties, actually all 99 counties. There was one county that got excluded, Orange County got excluded, because they used some money originally that the state didn't like. So, they're funding a half a million dollars for every county so that they can match up against the ARPA money they have so they can spend it and get fiber in the ground instead of sending it back to Washington for somebody else to use, put fiber in the ground. This project allows the county to additionally add money to it so that you can get a bigger chunk of money matched by the state. So, that is what we are recommending. We are recommending that you take the remaining amount of the money you had designated as a board for broadband, $1,089,708, and designate that for the stopgap solutions matching program so that we can get additional funding. Under CAB One, they said that CAB One was providing fiber access to 94.48% of the county. So, this last 5% essentially is what we're chasing on CAB Two, with the opportunity to hopefully get this universal service. So, that application, or that letter of commitment is due by midnight tonight. So, we have it lined up there for you, recommend your approval. And you have the budget amendment that moves the CARES money over to fund the remaining piece that the board had originally designated.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. Okay, we're down to Stan. You ready?
Oh, I am ready. Let me turn on my microphone, I'll be ultra-ready. Each month, not each month, but almost each month, I've been talking about institutional corruption and basically in regards to what I see apparent in our election coming up for President of the United States. It is true that we elect presidents by state. We are body politic upstate in North Carolina. We elect as per county. We have seen election interference terribly. And it's been handled in the most corrupt states like New York. And it was done just so that at the Democratic Socialist Convention, they could say he was a convicted felon. And I'm talking about President Donald Trump. They made up a law in order for him to be designated a convicted felon, hopefully to win more vibe for their new candidate who has never won a primary vote, Vice President Kamala Harris. Well, that's a problem. But what is a bigger problem is that the Democratic Socialist propagandistic media, or well in in scope, media outlets where not one journalist resides or works, because they'd left by now, they had any ideals, any integrity. They are not even interrogating, questioning the new Democratic Socialist candidate because they want her to have vibe. They want her to be popular. They don't want her to be smart. They want the public to be stupid. They think the public as a stupid body does a much better job electing the people they want elected. So, therefore, there's not going to be an interest by the media in that candidate. We're probably only going to have one debate, it's going to be tomorrow night. We should have at least three so that we can know who we're voting for. We have one candidate that's told you everything. He'll stand up there and meet with the public. And he will talk ad nauseam. He will meet with the press. He will answer every question. He has a vice presidential candidate that will answer every question. In fact, they control the room when they're over there in a room with the so-called media. Because the so-called media is so out of practice being journalists, they don't know how to act like journalists anymore. They don't know how to ask tough questions. They don't know how to even ask the Republicans in such a way that Republicans have trouble answering. They just handle the media like they're babies. So, what we have is a First Amendment that guarantees a free press. That's important in our nation. That gives us the right to know as a public. We do not have a free press that has any integrity. We have maybe 15, 20% of the media that has integrity, the rest has none. So, what I'm going to ask the public with my bully pulpit here tonight, know who you're going to vote for by reading, learning, finding out about their issues, their stances, what they're going to do. Know that Kamala Harris, every time she opens her mouth, and this is not just me saying it, this is what is actually happening. Every time she opens her mouth, she's either lying or saying something egregiously stupid. That's why they're not letting her go out and talk. That's why they're not letting her go and speak ad hoc to the media, to anybody. So, I'm just asking the public, know what is going on, know who your people are, know who the candidates are, vote like you have some integrity, even if the media that's supposed to be giving us a vast notice of who these people are have no integrity. With that, I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much. Hood, you're up next with the Beaufort County Community College policy on the-
I've got the next item is the school board discussion.
Okay, the amended, the amended one is what I'm looking at. That was passed out. It's on page 292. It was at your table. Yeah, I mean, it-
Yeah, this has to do with the community college-
The community college is advertising on their internal system out there, the screening system within the college, to attend an LGBT plus club meeting at the community college on August 29th at 1:00 PM. Now, you know, I've challenged this, and because the community colleges told us that this kind of stuff wasn't going on out there, and now we find out that it is going on. So, so much for what you can believe that the community college tells you. They did attach to our, to my request tonight, Beaufort County Community College has a variety of student clubs and organizations. There's something of every interest. We encourage students to initiate and participate in these groups. Involvement in a club can enhance your academic life. I doubt if this one will. And it is perfectly, a perfect way to make friends with similar interests. Well, I, you know, we, let's get exactly where I am with LGBTQ. It was fine when it was in the closet. But when you get out and start putting it in people's face and you start teaching young minds that they have to behave, that they can behave a certain way and it's perfectly legitimate as an educational function, then we have a problem. Because we're violating some basic morals situations here. Let me tell you some of the student clubs that they listed here. They have a Student Government Association, they call that a club. They have a Beaufort County Association of Nursing Students. They have an Environmental Alliance, Protect Our Lives and Explore the Outdoors, Discuss Current Issues, Help Us Keep Green. Well, that's nothing in the world but an indoctrination club. They have a Gamma Phi Beta Club for excellent students. They have a Men of Success Club. They have a Student Driving to Succeed Through Leadership Club. They have a Study Abroad Group. They have a Creative Writing Club, an Automotive Car Club, a Chast Club, a Jeremiah 29, I don't know what that is. Life on the Pamlico Club, a Mechanical Engineering Club, a Medical Lab Technology, a Music Club, and a Welding Club. Well, all of these things sound fairly innocuous and fine to me, but on the front page, they've got the LGBTQ Plus Club. Now, they've listed these clubs, they talk about, they have a procedure, student clubs and organizations procedures, you have to submit the name, you do this and you do the other. My question is, the college is supposed to be providing leadership for shaping people to go out into the world into the future. And when you start running these sex clubs, you are sending the wrong message to a lot of young people who think that this might, there might be something to this. You're sending them the wrong message. A better way to put this is to the president of the college, where are the adults at the community college? Because apparently there aren't any adults at the community college, or they would not be sanctioning a club like this. The people of Beaufort County do not need to support this. You need to be complaining to everybody that will listen to you because this is the kind of thing that will only get worse. Are you aware of the perversions that surround these clubs and the associations with these clubs? Again, this is a fine thing when it's in the closet. It's a fine thing if you want to go out here on Second Street and rent a room and have a club meeting of this type. This is not the thing that an educational system should be providing anybody with. Where are the adults at the community college? Where are the adults on the board of directors at the community college? I would be ashamed to serve on that board and be pushing this kind of mess in front of people. It is totally wrong. It is inappropriate. This is the wrong place for this. The school systems tells they're not, tell us they're not doing things like this. And every time we turn around, we find out this kind of stuff is going on. So, please, if you're a citizen of Beaufort County, talk to your member of the board out at the community college and anybody else that'll listen to you. This is wrong. We have to be against this. This will drag us down into the dirt before it is over with. And that's what I have to say about it.
I just have one thing. The Jeremiah 29 Club, is there a problem with that?
I don't know. What are-
That is God's message to the captives.
Well, that's fine. But sometimes they assign names to these things and the club doesn't even know what the name says.
If you look at Jeremiah 29 and 11, "For I know the plans that I have for you, plans to prosper you, not to harm you, but to give you an appointed end."
But it's a thoroughly biblical club. What is wrong with that? I didn't say there was anything wrong with it. I said I didn't know what it was.
Oh, okay.
What I said was I did not know what it was, because they put names on these things and they all sound very innocuous, and then you find out that it's not what you thought it was. But people need to speak out against this stuff. Don't be ashamed to speak out against this. Stop it before it gets so far down the road that you wish you never saw it or heard of it. Okay, you want to get to your Chaco Innity court cases? What page is that on? Uh, 297. Yeah, okay. Okay, the Chaco Innity court cases, I'll give you the update that I know about on the Chaco Innity court cases. The county attorney, do you have an update on Chaco Innity court cases? You're not going to say anything about it?
Let's have it.
Well, let me tell you what. Joy McCroy has a first appearance in court on one of these cases tomorrow. There has been a lawsuit that has been filed by, I believe, the Chaco Innity Fire Department against the talent Chaco Innity. And they did this as a protective measure to be sure that they can get their money back that she stole. And there have been other advice given that various other groups should be filing these lawsuits in order to protect themselves insofar as the recovery of the stolen money. lawsuits in order to protect themselves insofar as the recovery of the stolen money. Beaufort County's sitting here on its hands with an attorney that doesn't even want to talk about it, he's supposed to be protecting us. So what do you have in protection as a citizen of Beaufort County, having collected tax money and paid your tax money and sent it over to Chacoiniti to either the Bluff Creek Fire Department, Chacoiniti EMS, Chacoiniti Fire Department, the town of Chacoiniti, and had it stolen from you?
How much money?
You don't know whether they owe you any money or not because you haven't looked at it, the audits haven't been completed.
Over and testified that nothing was owed.
Who? Or they an accountant?
She's sitting right here.
Can you, all right, are you willing, are you willing to testify that no money has been stolen from Beaufort County and no money is owed to Beaufort County from the fraud cases that are going on at Chacoiniti? I don't think so. I didn't think so because you don't know, because we haven't investigated.
I, I was actually trying to respond, there were too many mics on. So as I think I explained at the last meeting, we have money that, that the, that the county collects for the town of Chacoiniti. That is their tax money. That is the tax money that the commissioners of the town of Chacoiniti levy under their authority as commissioners, as town commissioners. So we send that money over to them, we do take a small collection fee out of that, which we take from everybody we collect money from for taxes. So that's not Beaufort County money at all. That's town of Chacoiniti's money. The fire money and the EMS funds that are taxed, that are under the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners, you, you levy the tax rate for fire and you levy the tax rate for EMS based on the recommendation of those organizations. Those funds we, we collect, we only distribute them on a 1/12 basis, so we don't give them money ahead of time. We give them 1/12 so they get it every month. So as long, from our perspective, as long as they're continuing to provide EMS and fire service, which they are, then we're not out any money because we've paid for that service for that month that we've given them money. Now, if they abruptly stop providing that service and we continue to give them money, then yes, we're not doing something we should, but that hasn't occurred. So obviously, there can be a debate about who's responsible for money that is the possession of the town of Chacoiniti. I think that would be the town of Chacoiniti elected officials.
All right, Commissioner Reba votes.
Um, first of all, David, isn't this thing in the hands of the elected district attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the elected, the person that's been elected by the citizens of this county is now in charge of this case.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, the status is in his hands.
No.
Yeah, it is.
It's up to Beaufort County to look at us as commissioners, to look after the interest of Beaufort County. It's not up to the district attorney to look after the interest of Beaufort County. The status is that it's being prosecuted. What I'm saying is, what is liability, what do we need to be doing to protect Beaufort County and the taxpayers of Beaufort County in these fraud cases because there are multiple fraud cases, probably more than a million dollars has been stolen? So, so we are doing nothing to protect the citizens of Beaufort County. I'm talking about us, we, we group, what we have the authority to do. We're not using any of it.
What do we have the authority to do?
Protect the taxpayers by, by understanding the status of these various lawsuits and money was taken from which to where to who.
The status is in the hands of the district attorney.
No, it's not the status.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not.
He's the one that's trying them.
I'm not talking about what the district attorney is doing, I'm talking about what you're doing as a commissioner, protecting people of Beaufort County, and what you're saying is you're not going to protect them, you don't care because you voted over and over and over to do that.
I, I remind you that it was probably a year ago when this thing all started, that we were told we have no ability to audit them unless it's in the contract that we have with them to begin with, and we have no audit provision in any of the contracts. Plus, now it's the city of Chacoiniti that's doing it, and that's in the hands of the state.
Well, fraud is involved, so, so we have...
We have no legal ability to do anything.
Yes, we do too. We have the ability to find out what our status is, and this board has never taken a position to do anything to find out what our status is from a legal standpoint, other than to listen to the county attorney who doesn't want to do anything.
Yeah, well, I've just given you the status and I just told you where our ability to do is. So I'm asking that, I make a motion that we just take this off, off any future meeting for the next six months.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? I'll second that. Okay, all in favor of the... Whoa. Okay.
I'm not, my mic, it's not working.
Cut yours off, John.
Sir.
There we go.
Um, look, I just spoke about election interference. We saw in a corrupt state of New York where they made up a law right there in the courtroom so they could prosecute somebody, so they have talking points at Democratic Socialist National Convention. Look, all we have, we commissioners are elected just to observe and watch the treasury and see how things go and be a bully pulpit for what needs to be done right. It's not, it's not a question of us being accountable for law, we are accountable for money, and that's the way I see it. You know, let, let the law handle the law. Hopefully, we're going to have a judicial system in, in Beaufort County that will be much better than what it is in California and what it is in New York and these other states are losing population because of the dual justice system and everything's going to heck. So, you know, I don't want this area to become that. Hood is providing a service by saying, look underneath this rock, this is going on and more could be going on, and generally, we find, when there's corruption, there's more corruption. And there's corruption in Beaufort County, there's corruption in these cities. We, we have all kinds of problems, I didn't know, well, we should have been there, well, we didn't give them enough money, blah, blah, blah. At what point do we represent the good intentions of the, of the taxpayers and their constitutional right to have a, a, a clean, upstanding government? So, you know, Hood, God bless you. I'll, I'll vote with you.
Before you vote, I'll just be real brief with this, I want to remind you that you are the same people when we got reports of fraud on the use of the tax money that we collected from the people of Beaufort County, within Chacoiniti Fire Department and EMS refused to do anything about it. So, hey, guys, have at it.
All right, I think once again, we have to remind what the county manager has said, you know, the money's collected, Anita sends it over there to them, and it's used to provide the service. And I can tell you, all the digging that I have done is that they have needed more money than what they've ever got out of Beaufort County out of the tax dollars going over there. They've, they've had to get additional funds from the town of Chacoiniti to be able to provide those services. We have not been, to my knowledge, we've not been approached by our district attorney as it relates to any kind of investigation to pull us into it. So at this point in time, we're on the sideline, and I want to make sure that the people of Beaufort County understand, we, we don't feel like there's any fraud going on with Beaufort County's money going over there. You've got two commissioners that want to keep that stirred up in the air, and I think it's time to take it off the table for the next six months. So I'm going to ask at this point in time, we take a vote. All those in favor pulling this on?
I have one more comment before you do that.
Okay.
I believe that the finance officer admitted at the last meeting that she had seen a draft of the audit, of the first round of the audit. You have not. You did not say that. You haven't...
I looked at their last year's audit that they had posted online.
Oh, okay, but you haven't seen anything of the forensic audit that's been done?
No, no.
All right, have, have y'all been contacted about that forensic audit?
I have not spoken to anyone. The mayor called me one day last week about the EMS distribution that was discussed tonight, he had a question about that, but I have not spoken to anybody about the forensic audit.
Okay, okay, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Thank you. All right, you want to go to your next item as it relates to conflict of interest?
Well, look, the, I think the county attorney has a conflict of interest because he's given advice relating to his, his, the monies that he's collected from Beaufort County.
I have a, I have a second thing going on here, that the manager has not made a definitive statement yet, that the only monies that the, the county attorney has received during the year 2023 were in the $7,000 per month that's collected. He has avoided making the statement that there were any other funds that were dispersed, and because of that, and because the county attorney is giving advice about his own situation, I think we need to refer this matter to the Attorney General for an opinion.
Yes, Brian.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I tried to make this clear at the last meeting, and I'll try to make it clear again, I'm not sure as I'll get through, but I will try once again to make it clear. The only funds that flow from the county to any vendor go through a vendor file. It's the only way a check gets cut. So we went back and looked at, Commissioner Richardson asked for that timeframe, we pulled the vendor file, which is how we pay vendors, and we gave him exactly that vendor file. So that's all the money that was paid. According to the vendor file, that's all the money that was paid.
That's what I've been trying to get you to say now for two months.
So I have said that for the last two months.
That's wasted stuff.
All right, so there's been no other money paid whatsoever. What about expense account money, travel money, money for any other jobs? Nothing.
So any funds flow through the vendor file. Anything that we pay has to go through, it's either a vendor file or a paycheck. If you're an employee of the county, it's a paycheck. If you're a vendor of the county, it's through the vendor file. So everything would flow through there, so if, if, if we paid any funds, it would flow through the vendor file, and that is how it works.
There's no other monies paid to the, to the county attorney, I'm asking the county attorney, indirectly through third-party accounts where the county paid and then they paid you. Nothing of that. Okay, that's all I've been trying to get to. I don't know what has taken so long.
Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Richardson, I was not here last month, but I would have said definitively last month, the list we gave you is all the money that the county attorney has been paid, period. 7,000 a month. That's it.
Do you vote for that? I want to make sure you understand that. You were one of the seven people who voted for that, for that fee that I get every month.
Okay, gentlemen, I, I think it's very serious when you accuse somebody of a conflict of interest without having the evidence. That's, that's my, my comment on it. Okay, Katie, will you read us into closed session?
Sure. Motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 143318115 to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiation, negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property for purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or the amount of compensation and other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract.
Need a motion to go into the closed session?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're back from our closed session, I need a motion.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Got a motion to come out of closed session, and we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, I, we need some action, and I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that staff continues in the direction...
I make a motion that staff continues in the direction that they are going. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second. I'll second. All right, everybody, raise your hand. Good night.